Good morning and welcome to the Thursday, July 18, 2019, regular meeting of the school committee. At this time, I would invite those who are in attendance who would like to join us in the pledge allegiance to please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do have an opportunity for public comment here before we go into executive session, but I do not see any members in the public. So with that, I would request a motion to enter into executive session to comply with or act under the authority of MGL 30A, Section 21A 2, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the custodians union, because having the discussion in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining position and then to reconvene in open session and then also to comply with and act under the authority of MGL specific to the review of executive session minutes for March 5, 2019, March 21, 2019, May 2, 2019, May 7, 2019, and May 16, 2019. So I would seek that motion at this time.
So moved.
Motion by Meg, and is there a second?
Second.
A second by Jen, and we do require a roll call for this, so I'll start down there with you, Amanda.
Hi.
Meg.
Yes.
Jen, IMES, and Mina.
Hi.
And that enters us into executive session at 10:06 a.m., and we will return back here when we are concluded for open session. Okay, so we have just returned from executive session where we completed our business there, and we're going to move now into reports, and our first report up is the financial report with Ms. Rotherick.
Thank you. So as you know, this is the final report for fiscal 2019. You can see that the payroll and expense, the payroll came in with a positive variance of 120, and the expense came in at a negative variance of 120,000. I provided you with a memo that really went in detail for each of the categories that are spelled out on that first, or second page, I guess, no, first page, that gives the details of the payroll account variances and the expense account variances. In addition, if we can combine, you'll also see that final year-end transfer, which enabled us to keep some money in the building revolving account as well as keep money in the circuit breaker account. Both will set us up in a better space going forward for our budgets in the utilization of those accounts. So I guess, because that memo is so long, I wouldn't really get into the detail, but really just if you have questions.
Thank you for the memo. I think it was really clear and easy to read. I really appreciate the work to explain the numbers. It was nice.
Good, agree.
For some reason, I'm sorry. For some reason, I'm not able to hear folks very clearly.
Sorry, Mina, it was Amanda, and I just said that I really appreciated the time and effort to put together this detailed memo, because I felt like I read it and I understood, and it was clear, and it was nice. It was very easy to digest the year-end report.
Absolutely. I don't know, Amanda, if you had any questions?
I don't.
So I felt the same way, and I felt like the detail that's provided, the description that was provided, it was excellent. So thank you, Susan, for sharing that. I do have a few questions for you. One goes around the total line item for the revolving funds. The question is, how much of those monies will be carried over for next year?
So those are school revolving funds, so the entire fund carries over, the entire balance carries over for next year.
Okay. The second question I have is, you know, just looking at the over and under utilization, one can notice that for the subs, the budget utilization seems to have increased across the schools from what was budgeted except the high school. Can you share, can you or Dr. Kavanaugh share some detail around that? And what is the hiring or assessment criteria for subs? Are we having them for extended periods? Does it have anything to do with the growth that we're having?
So I'll take a piece of it, and Dr. Kavanaugh, I'll take a piece of it. If you look at the historical actuals, the elementary sub-budget has always gone over budget. So I believe if you probably back several years, that budget account was probably cut in an effort to balance the budget. The middle school and high school sub-budgets are significantly higher than the elementary, so I think that was an area that probably was used previously to balance the budget, because the actuals have always gone over. So I think this is something that for fiscal year '21, we definitely need to line up those accounts really to be more in line with what the actual history is. And again, you know, subs in terms of predicting on an annual basis is very difficult. You don't know if somebody is going to go out just for a short-term illness or a long-term, whether it is a maternity or any other issue that somebody would request a longer-term leave. So the exact prediction of how to do that really doesn't exist, and looking at historical actuals is really a better indicator.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just talk a little bit about the hiring of subs. So we are constantly hiring subs in the district. Every couple of weeks, one of the administrators will sit and conduct substitute interviews. It's very difficult to find substitutes for our day-to-day classrooms, and it's especially difficult when, you know, you're in a thriving economy. We pay about $85 a day. There's sort of a little formula that we use for that, for day-to-day subs, and so what we try to calculate is what we call our fill rate. So we look across our schools, and we try to say, how many subs were we able to put into classrooms? We usually have a very good fill rate, somewhere between 90 and 100% all the time. The high school obviously has a little more flexibility around subs, you know, so if a second-grade teacher's going to be out, we have to have a sub for that classroom. Sometimes at the high school level, a teacher will forego a sub and just electronically have kids work on something, you know, in sort of a big common area setting, so.
That's good.
Yeah, and as Mrs. Rotherick said, it's really difficult to predict, because, you know, you could have a teacher on the second day of school who breaks her leg, right? And just absolutely unpredictable, so.
Right. Thank you. The other, I have a few other questions. One is around the job postings that you mentioned. 144 job posting seems like a lot. Can you provide some background, some high-level breakdown around it, please?
Sure. So I think I had answered that one electronically, but I think what people sort of forget is that we are a very big institution, and we employ an awful lot of people. So we would be hiring paraprofessionals, we hire custodians, we hire maintenance people, we hire tech people, we hire administrators, we hire teachers, we hire secretarial staff, and those people very frequently are coming and going. So while 140 people seems like an awful lot in a given school year, it's probably not as many people as you'd think. When Kim Polnick does put out vacancy notices, you know, we all get them in our, through our email, and we do see, you know, two or three of them a week on average, I would say.
Okay. Just two more questions. One around the grants. It's great that to be able to see all the details around the grants that have been, that have come our way. I was wondering if there's any way to share what may have shifted year to year, whether it is an increase, a decrease, or something new that may have been done. Again, I know, Dr. Kavanaugh, you shared some of this, if you don't mind sharing it for the benefit of everyone.
Sure. So grants, I guess not dissimilar from some of these other categories, are a little bit unpredictable. Some years, the town of Hopkinton does get Title I money, some years we don't. It's really based on percentages of poverty levels. So for example, in FY '18, we did not get Title I money, and FY '19, we did get Title I money, and FY '20...
We're waiting with bated breath. It's not looking terribly positive.
So, but last year, for the very first time, we got Title III money, and Title III money helps our English language learners. We always get Title II, and this year, for FY '20, for example, Mrs. Rotherick wrote a grant for school safety technology in the amount of 49,000, and Mrs. Parson wrote one to sort of, you know, help kids learn in different ways from what we've traditionally done in Hopkinton in the amount of $15,000. So grant money also becomes available through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education based on sort of need throughout the state. So that's why those line items can be a little bit in flux. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add.
Thank you.
Because you're the grant guru.
Right. I just want to thank Ms. Rotherick and also Ms. Parson for having done this work.
Yes. Grant money is very helpful.
Yes.
Right, right. And the last question I have is around the legal fees, which seems to be shifting close to 100K, and, you know, it's about 35K over what was projected. So I was wondering if there are any measures we can take to contain this.
Well, again, I would say that's one that's very hard for us to predict. So some years, we will have a lot of public records requests. We'll be negotiating with the teachers, and we use legal counsel to do that. Sometimes we have, you know, employees with whom we are in litigation. Sometimes there are special education costs with litigation. Sometimes there's litigation that happens between the school district and kids and families. So, I mean, Legacy Farms, I think, was an example that we used a lot of legal counsel to sort of help guide us through that process. So, I mean, I think it just depends on need in a given year, and, you know, strange things happen.
Right, right. Again, I want to thank both Ms. Rotherick and you, Dr. Kavanaugh, and whoever may have been involved in pulling this report together. As Amanda said earlier, it was, you know, very readable, lots of detail, and, you know, just looking through data and making sense of it was so much easier. Thank you for doing such a great job with this year-end report.
Well, that was all Mrs. Rotherick, so, thank you.
Okay, so if there are no more questions on that, I think we're ready to go into the superintendent's report.
Sure. My report is very brief today. Whoopsie. A little excited. I just have a couple of things. So I don't know if you've been following this, but the athletic center at the high school finally got a brand-new floor, and over the past 20 years, you know, they've suffered water damage at times. So this is just a photo of the floor. You can see it is gleaming. If you have an opportunity to take a look at it, you should. It really looks beautiful. Right here, there probably are a couple more coats of poly that need to go on, but other than that, it's done and looking fantastic. So thanks really to Tim Person for getting that all going. We also have a couple of pictures of the bus parking lot. Work is underway, very exciting there, and we anticipate that we'll be ready for the opening of school.
Fantastic. That's fast.
Now, that looks like the grading has been fixed to bring that level with the road back there already?
Have you seen it? When you look, yeah, when you look at what the potential final elevation, there really is not a big grade difference. There's more of a grade difference towards the middle.
You're warned, and still.
It doesn't matter. There's more of a grade difference towards the middle school end and less towards the road.
Okay.
It's looking great up there.
We'll have to check it out.
Yeah, it is. It's looking really, a lot of progress.
Not related to the bus parking lot, but I would just update you that the calendar subcommittee met on Tuesday night, and most of the folks on that committee have been to town hall to be sworn in, so I think we are alive and well. It's a very good committee. And I thought our meeting, and Jen, you were there, and Meg, you were as well, I thought it was a nice meeting. Yeah, it seems like a very good group to work with, so I'm excited about that. Our policy working group met, and this is just for Mina, I know that you were waiting to hear about any perspective changes to the naming policy, but I don't think that we are bringing anything forth right now, so.
Thank you for sharing that, Dr. Kavanaugh.
And the last thing that I have for you, as always, is enrollment. This is enrollment on the screen. What you see is enrollment as of last Friday, but I did bring hard copies of this very morning, so, yes.
Because it stayed level for two weeks, didn't it, at least? Yeah, it went down.
It did not go down.
Okay. So what those columns are showing you is the current enrollment at a grade level, how many students have been approved, how many students have started the approval process in power school, so they're pending, and how many kids we know have exited. So there's a total now for each one of those grade levels, and you can see that we've put in Keeve Tech and Norfolk Aggie, anybody who's out of our district at a charter school, kids who are out of district at other schools, and the estimate for pre-K as well. So there are some places that we are looking at now that might be an area of concern. Grade nine.
Whoever had a class over 330 kids.
No, it's pretty much outrageous. I spoke with Mr. Bishop yesterday. He says, and yesterday, we were at 331, by the way, but at 331, he felt like he had the staff and the space to be able to accommodate those students in his building. So that was encouraging, but we are going to watch that number, because it's very high. The other places that we're kind of watching, we're looking at grade four. Even though five students have exited, you can see that there are 18 who are pending. So we've really gone from like 269 to 282 there, which is an increase of 13 kids. That's a little bit alarming, knowing where we try to keep our class sizes relatively low. And then the final place, the current, the kids who are going to be going into first grade in August. So when we began school last year, as a kindergarten class, they were at 264. They ended school at 273, and now they have grown to 282 for their, for starting kindergarten, I mean, first grade. So those are the places that we're keeping a very close eye on, and I will be keeping this group and other groups up to date as enrollment changes. So I guess our net increase for the, right now, is at 104 students.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Kavanaugh? So we're up to 332 for ninth grade. What is the panic number? When Mr. Bishop says we need more room.
It's 330. I think that we may not have a particular number, per se, but I think we're going to get to a place where we say, all right. So now we look at all of the grade nine English classes. For example, every student has to take English, and we say, those classes are just too big. So say, grade nine honors English classes hit 28. At that point, we might have to say, you know what? It's time to create another section. We might need .2 of an English teacher. So I feel like what's going to happen at the high school level is going to be .2, .4 in different disciplines. That's typically how those things grow at that level.
Kind of following along that and looking at what we did last year with regard to hiring additional staff. We're next scheduled to meet on August either 15th or 18th. My guess is that's going to be too late to add staffing.
If we need to add staff, we will have to do it on the 15th, I think.
Would it be worthwhile, but would it be something where it would be beneficial to have the school committee convene ahead of that meeting, even just for that one issue to allow the staffing to be in place? I mean, would they be able to be in place for the start of school if we did it on August 15th? Or do we really need it ahead of time?
Right, right, right. I see what you're saying, so.
That'd be a rapid posting and rapid hiring process.
It really would be, yes. I guess, I guess what I would say to that is, and the thing about the high school is you do have a little bit of flexibility in that you have subject matter leaders and, you know, that could be in a classroom, say.
To hold it in the beginning.
Yes, for a few days, yeah. But I would say that in the event that we need that, maybe we do have to have a special school committee meeting.
Like an emergency special.
Yeah. Prior to the 15th, absolutely.
Yeah, that's fine. You gotta, it's better to have them in place in time.
Yeah, I guess, sorry.
Go ahead, Mina.
I guess, I guess no matter what, it's not an easy situation. On one side, you have to wait for those enrollment numbers, or kind of have some idea which way the trend is going. I mean, if you have some pending, you kind of have a sense, right? And from that to making a decision and posting and whatnot. So I think, Nancy, you highlighting that out makes absolute sense, and the fact that if it's needed, we will be available to do it sooner rather than later, because we want the impact ultimately to the students and even the staff to be lesser, so we'll be there.
That's great, yeah. So we'll keep watching, and if we need a meeting before the 15th, we will make that happen.
It's just remarkable how...
Dr. Kavanaugh, I just had one comment. You know, certainly the ninth grade was something I was looking at, but even overall, if you look at it, we are 120 short of 4,000 kids, right?
Yeah.
108. Yeah. A little less than that.
Kids for whom we are responsible, yes, right? Yes.
Right. So I'm just wondering, you know, are there any thresholds? We've talked about this a little bit in a couple of past meetings. Would that trigger any kind of additional things that we may have to consider? Hopefully not this year, but just putting it out there for your consideration.
Right. I think going forward in the next couple of years, I think our big concern is going to be our physical plant. How much space do we have in which to educate our kids?
Absolutely. Thank you. And the high school athletic center floors look fabulous. So great job to Mr. Parson and the entire team that worked on it.
Yes.
Amanda, did you have something?
Just a comment. I mean, I feel like when we, when I joined this town, you know, the average was kind of hovering around 250 per class, and all of a sudden, like, you just look down the line, and we're, we're, the average is like 300, approaching 300 per class. I just worry about the, I'm very eager for the capacity study. I worry about that, both the middle and high school and Hopkins. I mean, schools where we have team structures, you know, things like that, and just like the number of bodies in the schools is definitely concerning, and I'm sure of transportation and cafeteria, I mean, all the services that support them, so. Go capacity study.
And I think you do make a good point about transportation, about cafeteria, all of those other things that are sort of out there, but we don't necessarily put those in the forefront of our thinking.
Yeah. Am I correct in recalling that as of the opening of school last year, we had about 3721 for enrollment?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
So it seems almost certain that in another year, we'll be over 4,000, if not sooner?
Yes, and, yes, and when we, I think last year when we used the number 3721, we probably did not have the Keeve Tech of the Norfolk kids in there, but, you know, just for, just because as Georgia and Linda Henderson are keeping these numbers, you know, they, they keep all the categories, so.
Is there a chance for us, perhaps this fall, once school is in session again, to tour the different buildings to see what it is like?
I would think so.
How crowded the classrooms are, how crowded, just to get a sense if my colleagues here would be amenable to that?
That's a nice idea.
Well, yeah, as the population is growing, I think it'd probably behoove us to have a real sense of the feel of it.
Nice idea.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, so that moves us into the school committee chair report, and in Mina's physical absence, I have continued to sign the payroll and other warrants on her behalf, and I have approved payroll warrants S-19026, S-19BAL, and S-20001. The payroll warrants have been included in your packet. I have approved warrants 19-104, 19-105, 19-106, 19-107, 19-108, 19-109, 19-110, 19-111, 20001, and 20002, and these warrants have also been included in your packet. Mina, did you have anything that you wanted to include as part of the school committee chair report as well? Did we? Mina?
Yeah, I'm still here.
I didn't know if you had anything else to add there on the school committee chair report.
Yes, thank you so much, Nancy, first of all, for taking care of the payroll warrants. I have a few updates. The first thing I want to share is that planning board chair has been in touch about the growth study committee and the charter that they're drawing out. I'm going to be meeting with her next week, along with our select board chair, to discuss a little bit about the charter related to the growth study committee and her thoughts on how the school committee may get engaged. I'm going to bring all of that information back to the school committee, and we will make a collective decision around that. The next update I have is around MASC. I've been in touch with MASC, and my request to them was around some terminology related to finance and if there is any kind of a training that's available. Apparently, they don't have anything ready, but they have taken our request and are putting something together for the summer. I've also requested to see if we can have a training in fall along with an informational session. Any thoughts or ideas that folks have on what the informational session could be about, what the training could be about are welcome. We had discussed a few ideas when we met at our last meeting, but I would love to hear ideas from folks. You can email me or share at this point, too.
There's a great, I don't know if you saw this, the, as part of the MASC, that we did the first module last year, they have two additional modules related to kind of like the next steps up that they go into detail, and I know that Dorothy Presser can customize those as well. I would be interested, I would be interested in following through with one or both of the other modules.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Mina, I would be, Mina?
Yeah?
I would be curious if they have a, some kind of training on best practices of community communications, because I know when Megan and I did new member training, there was quite a discussion around blogging and whether that violates open meeting law and whatnot, but sort of, I'd be curious about best practices among other districts in terms of reaching community members.
Absolutely.
And we've taken great strides, but I don't really know what other people do, and how do they use Facebook versus blogging versus emails versus whatnot? I don't know, newsletters? And I'm sure someone's doing great things. It'd be nice to get insight into that.
Yeah?
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing that thought, Amanda. And, you know, if any ideas come up later, too, you can, anyone can send a note, and I'll be happy to take that forward. The other one is around, as a takeaway from our last meeting, was a discussion around the school committee goals. Dr. Kavanaugh had suggested, you know, holding off a little bit around the school committee goals discussion until her goals are reviewed and the school improvement plans are looked at. I was hoping to pull a draft together at the highest level of what that goal could be before we define anything further. More to come on that in our next meeting or two, and if there's anyone wanting to partner with me, I would love that.
Great. I would partner with you, Mina.
Did I hear a volunteer?
What she's looking for right now, all right. I mean, I would partner with you, and I would also ask, do you want us to think about goals on our own and come with our own ideas to the collective meeting? Is that another way to partner?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. A couple of updates on correspondence that I received. There's a request from a community member to name a facility in Elmwood, so I was waiting for the update on the procedure and the next steps. Dr. Kavanaugh shared some updates with regard to the, you know, what the policy working group did, so I'll be sending communication back to that member. The other one was related... The other one was related to fundraising effort, which is underway, related to field number six. The group involved shared some information related to the same. So that's all I have for updates with regard to the chair report. Thank you Nancy.
So do people have liaison reports? Some, I know it's a little bit slower sometimes, so.
Our, our policy working group met, but it was largely surrounding that naming policies. Though we did some work on it, but it's not ready, ready to rock yet.
Will that come forward in the fall then?
Uh, yeah, probably. I don't, I can't give you a timeframe.
No, I don't need an exact date, but I just, it is coming forward with suggestions in the next few months.
Right, yes, yes, pending, yeah.
Okay. That's great. I had one, which was that I've been working with the bridge subcommittee on getting, and Project Just Because, who has agreed to help the schools to fill unmet needs for students with regard to school supplies. And they're getting things collected now for all of our grades, which is really great in everything from the calculators to frans and markers and everything in between. So there will be more. And I have sent that out to the schools so that they are aware of it as well. And then also with regard to snacks and other things that Project Just Because can help us with, so. That feels very positive.
Nancy, I have one small, but sorry, did someone else want to speak?
No, I think it's all you.
Just a small update on the tech front. I know we are going to be discussing who it'll be next, but I was in touch with the executive director to kind of ask about any training opportunities that may be available and open to school committee members, mostly around innovative programs in any area, whether it is special needs or any other area. Because they do conduct a lot of training. And so Dr. McGonigal said that she would look at the suggestions made and keep us posted. And of course, if other members have any ideas, you know, maybe we need to talk a little bit about what tech does so folks have a better idea to see if we can utilize some of the resources that are available through tech. I, I think it's a fabulous resource.
Great. Thank you. So that moves us then into new business. And item A is the vote to ratify the custodian's memorandum of understanding. And as everybody at the table knows, we did discuss the MOU in our executive session. We are required to repeat our vote in a public session. I don't know, Ms. Rothermack, if you wanted to say anything about that before we do so?
No, if you are all set?
I am all set. So I would seek then a motion to approve the, ratify the custodian's memorandum of understanding for July 1, 2019, through and including June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
It's a motion by Meg, second by Amanda, and we'll do a roll call vote. And I'll start with you, Meg.
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Jen?
I am a yes.
And Mina?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes five to nothing. So that moves us then into item B, which is the middle school gift account. And Dr. Kavna, I have you up for that.
Okay. So, as you know, we always approve gifts that come into our schools. This one is going to the middle school Desire to Inspire program. So I am seeking your approval for a $750 check from the Benavidez Community Impact Fund for the middle school.
So moved.
Motion by Meg, second. Second by Amanda, a roll call with you, Meg?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Jen?
Yes.
I am a yes. And Mina?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes and that moves us into the Hopkins School gift account. Also, you, Dr. Kavna.
Okay. So at Hopkins School, there are those programs where kids can create art and families will buy products containing their kids' arts, and Art Sony is one of them. We are looking for you to accept $645.87 from Art Sony to be put into the Hopkins School gift account.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meg, second by Amanda, a roll call starting with you, Meg?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Jen?
Yes.
I am a yes. And Mina?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes five to nothing. And that then brings us into item D, which is B paraprofessionals for Elmwood and Hopkins. Dr. Kavna?
Sure. So you know that I had also shared this information with you in a memo. What I am looking for are two B paraprofessionals for Elmwood and one B paraprofessional for Hopkins. So the Elmwood School this year had worked with a consultant and we thought about the ways in which we are currently structuring our CO-TALK classrooms. And what will be happening with some of those classrooms in the fall is that we will have one special educator shared across two classrooms. It's, that's sort of advantageous in the sense that we can set that up for a profile of child. We can take a look at how we are grouping kids so that you can pull kids from two different classrooms and, you know, have them, you know, have reading instruction or math support, those kinds of things. But what we're also looking for is to be able to have a couple of paraprofessionals to also assist in those classrooms at times when, say, for example, the special educator is worth working with classroom A, the paraprofessional would be working with classroom B. And so you can see that the cost for that is, oops, it's on the memo, so I apologize for that. Let me scoot right across to that for you. The cost for that is $23,545 per pair, which is $70,635. We are hoping to be able to use some of the appropriated money from legacy farms if we need to, but because we have thought about those monies as being, you know, somewhat sacred, if through personnel attrition or salary reserve, you know, some other funding becomes available, we would use that before we would use the legacy farms money. Questions?
I think it's a great idea. The more adults you can get, especially if the class sizes are starting to creep up, the more adults in that classroom is, is the way to go.
Okay, then if there are not any questions, I would seek a motion to approve the B paraprofessionals for Elmwood and Hopkins.
So moved.
Motion by Meg, second by Amanda, roll call starting with you, Meg?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Jen?
Yes.
I am a yes. And Mina?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes five to nothing.
It would be great for kids, thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. So that brings us into the superintendent goals for FY '20.
So I've also shared that document with you. And just to be very clear, these are in draft state right now. So I do in fact invite your feedback. This year I have four goals here. The first one is a district improvement goal, and it is directly related to enrollment growth, and it focuses on our school facilities. What I hope to do is to be able to look at our buildings, see where we need to generate more space, whether that is through renovation, addition, whether that might even mean using portable classrooms in particular places. But by the end of the budgeting process, I think that we will need to be able to bring something to the community and to annual town meeting that takes a very careful look at our capital budget relative to physical space. So you can see that I've included all of those process benchmarks and product benchmarks as we go. I've tied it to the superintendent's rubric specifically to E1 fiscal systems. And based on our current strategic objective document, it is aligned under our plan for enrollment growth, metrics for success. Specifically, it's aligned to bullet four, our plan for human resource facility and equipment needs. Some of the resources that we have currently, we have an SOI in with the MSBA for the Elmwood School. We have an architectural firm taking a look at projected costs to add those classrooms on that wing at the high school that, you know, sort of wasn't developed when the high school was built. We were approved at town meeting for $50,000 to conduct a capacity study. And currently, we are doing renovations to the White House. And those are being done entirely through donation. And so we're excited to get the interior of that building up and running for our 18 to 22 program. So I don't know if you would like to go goal by goal and have questions, or just I could read them off and then we'll have questions.
It seemed easier to go goal by goal?
Yeah, right as well.
Okay. Anybody have questions or comments on goal number one?
I think it's, I like that, especially in light of the most recent enrollment numbers, I think that this is, is a, is a great goal because we do need to figure out what we're gonna do. And so to make it one of your goals, it's gonna happen, which is great. You know, it's not just something we continue to talk about, it'll be action. So I think that's, so it makes a lot of sense. And the things that you've already put in motion are fantastic, but, you know, once that number hits 4,000, we're gonna need to have some places to put physical space to put kids.
Yes, we are.
It would be great if we could be outside. January would be tricky, so.
January would be very tricky.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. And I, I think that it's, you know, you have to tie it to the superintendent rubric, but it makes perfect sense the way you tied it in. So I think this is a, a good way to start it off.
I agree. I think the community is really feeling a little bit of unease with the, the growth. And I think this will help for people to have a pathway for how we're gonna move forward and how we're going to be able to be proactive and to embrace the growth that we have in a way that is beneficial for all of our schools. So that, and I just also really wanna underline how enthusiastic I am for the White House project that you have undertaken and your ability to bring in resources that are not at cost for our budget is tremendous and much needed for the 18 to 22 population.
I've heard a lot of people talking about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the community, people are talking about it, yeah.
Will allow for some great programmatic changes that you have talked about in the past, so I am excited for that.
Yeah, and I could not do this without Tim Person, so, and Susan Rothermack. So thank you to that whole group and our organization.
And you mentioned that you're going-
Dr. Kavna, sorry, Meg, you were saying something. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mina. You mentioned that you're going to explore grant funding for the exterior renovation of the White House?
So I do have that in here. We'll see if that will work. If that doesn't work, we are probably going to need to go to the community and talk about a capital expenditure to do the exterior of that building.
Yeah.
One of the things that Mrs. Rothermack, Mr. Person and I did, we went to the basement of that building, and it's very interesting in there, the foundation is built on great big timbers. So it's like trees that are holding up, I mean, for lack of a better term, holding up. So I'm, you know, for many times, as we've heard, is it on the historic register? No, it's not. Is it considered a historic building? I do think that because of the structure of the building, it does have, you know, some significance, I think, in the community. So at that point, I think the community's gonna have to make a decision about restoring the exterior. If you look at things like the fascia boards, they are entirely rotted out. If you go into the attic portion of that and look up, it's like Van Gogh's Starry Night, you can see outside.
Right.
So, so there is an awful lot of like real construction to be done on that building.
Will any of the interior renovation be threatened by the state of the exterior? Because I know that there are great arctic gusts blasting through that building in the winter.
I, I don't think that the interior renovation is gonna be impacted by it, but you can probably speak better.
Yeah, no, I mean, we would have known that because we've had people working in that building for years.
Yeah.
So there has not been complaints of water coming in through the windows as of, for instance, people are on that upstairs, right underneath the attic. So while you do see stars, that section of the roof is over storage. So at this point in time, we don't see, you know, water damage coming in. Might it be chilly in some sections? It might be chilly in some sections. But that's easy enough to add additional storm windows, which I believe there may be. You know, the old houses, they typically had those storm windows that hang on hooks and clip in, so.
Right.
Like I said, for the people who have been working in this, in the building for many years, the conditions have been, have been fine.
That's great, thank you. And thank you for undertaking this.
It's very exciting.
Dr. Kavna, as I shared a little bit earlier with you, my only suggestion on this particular goal is related to staffing.
Yes, and so I think? No, I'm happy to add the staffing piece, but the staffing piece, I think, is just going to come sort of naturally. Because, you know, as, when Mrs. Tyler asked before about what happens, like where is that pressure point for, you know, adding additional faculty at the high school, for example? I think that that will just continue to happen all along this year as it did last year. I mean, you are all the same committee from FY '19, I'm moving into FY '20. And so I think you're no stranger to the idea that we are constantly coming to you asking for, can I have a half of a math teacher? Can I have a third grade teacher? Can I have three paraprofessionals? So I'm happy to ask, add that piece. Mina, if you would like for me to do that?
That's my view, of course, as the entire committee, for everyone to think of it. I guess to me, it's about the vision, that, you know, all the work around the facilities, the growth. And so to me, the staffing goes hand in hand with it.
Sure.
Along those lines, go ahead, actually, Mina, you haven't spoken yet, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I mean, my, I had asked to take a look at the RFP of this, just to get a sense of what the scope of what we're asking for was specifically on the study. Because I think I'm 1,000% behind this goal. I think it's excellent and urgent. So this year, for me, is the right year. My, my only concern, kind of as I alluded to before, is does it include the non-classroom space in the schools? Like just managing the human traffic and human movement within the schools? Just because at each school, we were now, you know, significantly as a school population, larger than we were before. So I, and I, it seemed like it was addressing the related art spaces and, and so forth. And I would just ask to keep an eye toward just general crowdedness.
You mean like hallways and stuff?
Hallways, cafeterias, study halls, you know, even to some degree, after-school programming spaces that we use, and especially in the middle school and high school, where we are trying to encourage a rich extracurricular program. And we have lots of things going on, but do we have places to put people? Like, you know, do we, if we have, if we add a new course, if we now have a new glee club or something?
Right.
Obviously, we're gonna have to make some choices, but to what degree can our space accommodate not just classroom? So.
Good call.
And that's a good, what I was gonna add, and it's sort of along those same lines, is this is definitely a more proactive approach to what we know is coming. I think with staffing, we know it's coming too, but I think we have to be almost reactive in the staffing arena because we have that sort of fiduciary responsibility to budget the number of teachers. And so when we need more, we need more, but we can't necessarily say, next year, we think we're gonna need 15 new teachers. We just don't know based on, on the student population. But this is a proactive goal in that we know we're growing. We know our buildings are going to be bursting at the seams soon. So we know, we need physical space for students and staff and all the other human traffic in the building. So I, you know, I appreciate the proactiveness of it, but also, you know, to Mina's point, for sure, staffing is critical. But I feel like they might be two separate things because this, we know we're growing, we're gonna need it. Staffing, we know we're growing, but we don't know when we're gonna necessarily need those, those teachers and, and paraprofessionals.
I think the other thing for me that, that makes buildings just a little different from staffing is that if you decide that you need 0.6 of a math teacher, you post the position and in a month's time, you have 0.6 of a math teacher in a classroom. But if you decide you need four high school classrooms, it can be two years from the time, you know, you have an architect look at the project to having kids actually in the building. If you're thinking about an SOI through MSBA, it can be five years from the day you submit to the day kids walk in, so. It's just.
Or more.
Right.
Maybe 10.
So that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Anything else on goal number one? Then we're ready to move into goal number two?
All right, so goal number two is sort of a carryover from last year. This is not only a district improvement goal, but also a professional practice goal. The goal states, "Understanding that staff growth in areas of diversity, sensitivity, equity, and inclusivity can't be fostered by professional development alone. So I would like to continue sort of that, some of the grassroots methods to build the repertoires of our administrators, faculty, and staff with the hopes of ensuring greater social and psychological safety for all students." I don't want you to think that I'm not looking to bring in someone to do some kind of training with our staff. But as Jen has done really most of the legwork on this, and as she has reached out to different presenters, maybe just because of the demand for diversity training in districts everywhere, it's been a little bit tricky to find someone who has sort of the dates and availability for the 1920 school year. and availability for the 1920 school year. But the other piece is that, and, you know, maybe Jen can speak to this a little bit, that as we've looked at, you know, the cost for some of the folks that we've reached out to, some people want, you know, $9,000 to come in for 90 minutes. So, you know-
Or $20,000.
Or $20,000 to come in for 90 minutes. And one of the things that we know about professional learning is it really has to sort of be ongoing, um, in, in effort to, uh, really have some kind of an impact. You know, if you attend something for 90 minutes, it may help you to become a little bit more aware of your unconscious biases. If you attend something, you may walk away like very pumped for, you know, the learning that's just happened, but without that, you know, sort of recursivity of the learning, it, it just, it kind of fades from us. So, uh, you can see that I do have some process benchmarks there. Jen had recommended a text, "We Got This: Equity Access in the Quest to Be Who Our Students Need to Be." So one of the things that I think we're doing this year is taking the focus from just working with the, the, the people, the adults in our school, and thinking more about the relationships between the adults and the kids. And I would really like to have some kind of plan in place for us to begin the interrogation of our curriculum as well. And that's something that we heard at the focus groups. When we had people there, they, they wondered about, you know, our curriculum, how we deliver our curriculum. Is it done through a very largely Eurocentric kind of lens? And so, you know, that, that may be something we can start to slice away with, at, you know, chip away at, I guess, during this year, and then maybe have some kind of a very concrete plan in place for looking at that. Yesterday, I talked to Mr. Bishop a little bit about that. He feels like, you know, his teachers now are getting all their curriculum in place to be launched on the new website. And he certainly thinks that that's, you know, something that could be happening at the high school. And, you know, if not the second half of this year, certainly the following year. But he's got a retreat planned for Monday and Tuesday and is going to run it by his subject matter leaders. So I think that's, that's pretty positive. Uh, you can see again, it's tied to the superintendent's rubric, um, namely Standard Three: Culturally Proficient Communication and Standard Four: Professional Culture Policies and Practices. It's tied to our current strategic objective. It's aligned under Build School Communities of Collaboration in the category of diversity. Create inclusive cultures that celebrate diversity and backgrounds and build relationships across race, class, gender, and learning abilities to create caring learning communities. You can see the resources that we have there. Not only will we be using that text throughout the year, but, um, I'll be attending vision trainings. And, uh, Jen and I had a professional workshop with Dr. Adolph Brown. She's since reached out to him. He's very expensive, but very wonderful. So it'd be really good if we could get him to come to Hockington. We're not sure that that will happen. But I think that this sort of is an extension of, you know, the ADL work that we had done last year and some of the other things that we had done as an admin team.
I'm very excited about this goal in particular. I like the idea of the curriculum interrogation plan, only because I've learned very much recently about doing the same with the curriculum we teach. And trying to locate texts that reflect the cultural backgrounds of the students more completely, so they can bring more of their knowledge into the classroom, has been a great benefit. So this is gonna be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm also really, um, in support of this, as well as the curriculum interrogation plan. I think that will be a really great output of this work for, um, to help us really look at what we're doing, and not just in text, but music and art and, um, and even wellness. I mean, are we playing cricket? Are we trying new sports? We, you know, what are we doing? Are we looking at other artists from around the world and so forth?
That's great.
So I'm, I'm excited. I think this is the right direction to go in, so.
Good. Yeah, I mean, yes, right. I mean, and, and it makes sense. I think sometimes it's tricky when you pull a goal from the previous year. Folks are like, didn't you have that goal last year? But this is one that has to be, I feel like you could just keep it forever.
It takes time.
It's just one of those things that you should, we need to, as your goal, yes, you, but everybody needs to constantly think about what we're doing, what we're teaching, and, and how, um, how it's connecting with the kids that are sitting in the classroom. So I think it, it makes a lot of sense. It's good.
Agreed. Brings it to the next level.
Yep.
Mina? I have, yes, I, I do have, uh, one suggestion, and I do, um, I'm, I'm excited to see the intent behind doing all of this work and how important it is. It's so directly aligned with the strategic plan. And so I'm excited to see all, uh, the work that Dr. Kavanaugh has planned with, uh, Ms. Person and Sir Person, sorry. And so my, uh, only suggestion is related to the evidence. What I would want to see is, what is the impact of all of this work to students? And so, you know, we had done a baseline survey, uh, last summer. So I, I would like to understand, how is it that we can measure that the work that is being done last year and then going into this year, what is the impact to students at the end of the day as a result of this? So some form of measurement on the impact to students is what I would like to see in the evidence. If, Dr. Kavanaugh, you can think about some ideas, uh, of what those evidence could be, whether it is a survey or a series of surveys or some other ways, uh, I think that'll be very helpful.
All right, yeah, and I guess, you know, just to be clear about last year's survey, I think we had all agreed that that was not a baseline survey. But, but I think it did give us information about some starting points for us as an admin team. Um, I will think about how to sort of measure the success of this, but I think when, when we look at surveys that involve, you know, students or faculty, sometimes because it's sort of a self-assessment, I think there are some people who are, you know, very well-versed in issues around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And maybe sometimes because they are so knowledgeable, they don't give themselves credit for the knowledge that they have. And sometimes there are people who are not aware of their unconscious biases and would rate themselves very high. So I'm certainly not averse to a survey. I'm just not sure of the accuracy of the measurement, but I'm, I'm happy to do it.
That, that's fair, Dr. Kavanaugh. And that's where I'm saying, if you can think of those measurement tools which are able to show us the shift in student experience, um, and, you know, the, the culture within the schools, the shift, the reason for all of this work ultimately is towards that. So if there's a way that you can think of what that tool is, whatever that might be, I think that'll help.
So can I ask just a clarification for you, Mina, just to, because I, I agree that a survey could be problematic in terms of how, what it actually tells us, particularly since we don't have real baseline data from last year to compare it to. But would you see things such as, um, you know, looking at some of the texts that are brought in, looking at some of the, um, if there are different artists and things like that as evidence? Because surely that would impact student experience if they see more of, uh, cultural diversity in it? Or are you looking for something like a, like a number, like an X percent of kids kind of a thing?
Um, I would like to, I, I myself would like to think about this a little bit more. Look to see what others may have done on this path who are ahead of us. And perhaps look to, you know, what is a reasonable measure?
I like the idea, Mina, of, I, I agree 100% with Dr. Kavanaugh, that last year's survey was a take-the-temperature survey, not a baseline survey. So I think measurement would have to start, we'd have to, if this is something we wanna do, which I kind of like the idea of measuring student comfort and, and safety, and feeling of belonging and whatnot, um, I think we'd have to think about it and design it. Um, and I guess I'm, I'll just throw this as you're thinking about it, Dr. Kavanaugh. I think when we were at the MASC, MAS conference last year, one of the sessions was, um, a vendor who provided, um, social-emotional surveying, and I think Framingham was using them. I'm wondering, they, they had offered their catalog of questions free.
It was Framingham.
And I'm wondering if we could circle back to their catalog of questions and see if they have, um, a category on diversity and inclusion and belonging, you know, as, as a measure of SEL? Because we could maybe piggyback, and if we could come up with like a three to five-question survey that we kind of just do on a regular basis, that's not too ponderous, we might be able to get some insight.
Yeah, I think that group is Panorama. Um, and I think currently, Mr. Bishop does put out a survey to kids each year, asking them about sort of those levels of comfort, but maybe we could share some of those questions with him. Yeah, from Panorama.
Yeah, I haven't, have you looked at their question database at all? I haven't looked.
I did look at the high school one. Oh, you mean Panoramas?
Yeah.
No, I did not. No. I mean, I've seen the results of the high school survey, but I won't remember the answers right now.
Something to think about.
Yeah.
Is there anything in the Metro West Health Survey about that kind of information?
There is.
I feel like there already may be existing data.
Yes.
That-
I think that was included in this year's-
I, I think it was too. So it, we may have that info, and we just don't even know we have it.
We do have some of it, yeah.
We wouldn't get to the younger kids.
No, you're right. But we wouldn't have, have a uniform tool that we could use for all kids, I think, if you're talking to the littles. You know, you have to have a different.
Yeah.
So it, yeah.
The only thing if I could add, um, thinking about this goal area in terms of how we might wanna measure it, I see this as something in terms of impact on students that would, would be measurable over a length of time that would include more than one school year. So we're really in the infancy of, how are we going to do something that will have a demonstrable impact on students? We will not see a lot of that until June, by this coming June. So when we think about a superintendent's goal, if it's a one-year goal that she or me, because I see myself in a lot of this, is measured on in a year's time, I don't think we'll see that. But I think what we will see, I think kind of to your point, Nancy, is introduction of new materials, which are things that we've already started on working or having teachers really look at when we move into the next two stages of curriculum development. How do we now go back through that and assess materials and authors and artists and all those things? That will take some time to have a measurable impact.
Change the climate, I would think, would take sustained effort over a number of years-
Sure.
-to get it, but-
But if we put something in place, I mean, how interesting would it be five years from now to look back and see? I mean, even though, not within the context of your goal, but, you know, to, to check you out, you know, but more putting something in place so that we can actually see if we move the needle over five years.
Yeah.
And I think, um, there's a wonderful curriculum with which you're probably familiar called Teaching Tolerance. And I think the way they measure success in those programs is over a longer period of time. And they take a look at both students' and teachers' reflections. So they'll have the student, for example, write something about their sense of identity at the beginning of the year and how that shifted by the end of the year. So I'm not sure a survey would even capture that kind of intellectual and emotional growth. I think, um, some written or even, you know, videoing the younger kids is a way to capture it. But this is great, you know? It's all good, and it does take time to measure, for sure.
All right. Then I guess if there's no more on goal number two, we're ready to go into goal number three.
Okay. Goal number three is a professional practice goal. I'm hoping to grow my communication between sort of families and this community and elected officials over the next year. Um, and again, you can see I have process and product benchmarks there. Um, I think I, I started with, uh, my first year last year, you know, with, with some good community engagement, but I think that there are other ways that I could reach out to the community. I know that I attended a lot of sort of singleton events and dealt with parents on individual basement, bases, but, you know, to sort of reach out to all families with more frequency would be helpful. Uh, so you can see that it's tied to at least three places, understand the three of the superintendent's rubric, um, Community and Business Engagement, Culturally Proficient Communication, and Family Concerns. And then it's tied to our current strategic objective, uh, under Build School Communities of Collaboration, Community and Stakeholder Partnerships, Grow Partnerships Between Families and Schools, and also aligned under the Plan for Enrollment Growth, Community and Stakeholder Partnerships, Build Impactful and Engaging Communications and Partnerships with Elected Officials. So it does feel like the strategic objective document, as well as the superintendent rubric, sort of put a lot of emphasis on, on this kind of work. And I think that it's, it is a place where I could personally grow and professionally grow.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I have no comments on this one. I love the blog.
I was gonna say that too.
I love the blog. I hope that people find it-
Well, there's one installment.
And read it as it comes out. I think, um, I have learned a lot through, through you, from your voice and your experience and, and communication that I often wish people could hear. So I'm excited that there's a medium, at least for you to, on a periodic basis, share some reflections, um, on things that are happening in the world, or of education, or child rearing, whatever. I had also, you know, this is maybe for us, Mina, for our discussion on our goals, I, I have a little feeling that maybe there's an opportunity for a joint goal with school committee here. And I don't know that that's ever done, and I don't even know what that looks like, but I feel like in the one space where school committee operates, it's in connecting with the community. And I don't know if, I don't know, I just throw that out there for thinking, as people are thinking about our own goals, how can we dovetail into this or play off of this or what? I don't know.
Amanda, I'm actually having a hard time hearing you. Did I hear this right, that you're talking about, uh, you know, some form of communication with the school committee?
I was just suggesting that maybe this isn't, I, I don't know, we've never done goals before, so I was thinking that maybe this is an opportunity for school committee to think about maybe a joint goal with the superintendent around communication. I don't even know what that looks like, but I just had that feeling, and I thought I'd share.
Right. Um, I, I personally think that's a great idea. First of all, I really like that, you know, there's going to be a blog, and I love the way Dr. Kavanaugh writes. Uh, I, that's one of her biggest strengths, and I'm looking forward to this blog and reading it and learning from it. And I'm hopeful that a lot of people in the community, students and parents, um, are going to benefit from this effort that Dr. Kavanaugh is making. And, and to your point, um, Amanda, I think if we can have some kind of, uh, you know, detail around all the key decisions that have been made through the school committee meetings, uh, I think even, uh, some kind of information around that would help. I'd in fact, shared something around that, and, Dr. Kavanaugh, uh, do you wanna speak to that a little bit?
About, I'm sorry, say that again?
Um, we exchanged some emails around possibly sharing some of the decisions that are being made at the school committee meetings and sharing that with the community on a regular basis.
Oh, do you mean reports?
Yes.
Okay, yep, so I recall. Um, yeah, so we did have a conversation about bringing more reports to this body, and I think that, you know, maybe that would have to come from sort of your interests, as well as things that we as a school department think are important to sort of share with the community. So for example, um, I know that, you know, in the past, we've had conversations about, should we have a presentation that shows, you know, sort of the growth and achievement of students on IEPs? Should we, you know, have that sort of very traditional MCAS kind of a presentation that Mrs. Person would do annually? Or are there other aspects of sort of standardized testing or MCAS that, you know, as a school committee you would be interested in? Uh, so that's, that's kind of where we went, and I think this morning, you and I, Mina, we talked a little bit also about, um, the presentations that our department heads make in art and music, and are there other aspects of those two disciplines, K to 12, that would be of great interest to this committee? As opposed to sort of that very standard, this is, you know, how many concerts we did? This is how many kids won Gold Key Awards? Um, but are there other, other things that would be also of genuine interest to you? So.
Right. Um, and, and, Dr. Kavanaugh, we also talked about that, you know, possibly a bi-weekly email notification or some form of notification that talks to the key decisions. I think you mentioned, uh, Joe Sawyer.
Yes, so I live in Shrewsbury, and each time there's a school committee meeting, we get an email from the superintendent that will say, um, "Tonight, there's a school committee meeting. It's starting at 7 o'clock. It's going to be held here." And these are all of the things that will be decided upon at tonight's meeting, which I do think is kind of nice, just to make the community aware of, you know, what, what kind of activity might be happening at a school committee meeting. So I would be more than happy to add that to this list. I think it's great.
I think that's a great idea.
And, Georgette, and I could do that lickety-split.
Fantastic.
And I think we have a sample also from the Walsley School District around some communication. So perhaps some samples to look at, and I'm sure you'll put your own signature to it.
Sure.
Okay, then, are we, in the interest of time, ready to move on to goal number four?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
All right, so this one is a student achievement goal. Last year, you'll remember that we took a look at some of the, some of our more struggling learners would be taking the grade 10 MCAS for the very first time, the MCAS 2.0. And so that was a very specific student achievement goal this year. I'm hoping to be able to launch some initiatives that build innovative learning opportunities for kids. So what I have here now, sort of tentatively, and I say tentatively because that first one, to have a STEAM coordinator position for the district and to get some of our kids so that they were doing things like internships and externships, and that we're growing STEAM programs in some of our elementary schools, that would be dependent upon grant money. And as you know, the state has not finalized its budget yet. We have been earmarked for a fairly substantial grant. But you know, until that budget is finalized, that can go away. So hopefully, the state will have that done next Wednesday or Thursday, and we'll know whether or not this could be a reality. Through tech, the Education Collaborative, we have an opportunity to train two teachers as Fuse Fellows. And that would be something that would promote more personalized learning in our district. I would like to conduct a special education audit with Karen Zaleski and Mrs. Carver and Mrs. DeBeau at Marathon in Elmwood to just sort of look to see if our special education delivery instruction methods are as effective and efficient as they should be. So the person who had come in and done sort of a micro audit at Elmwood last spring would be the consultant with whom we would be working. She's done an awful lot of work in area schools. I know that she's just spent six years over in Westboro, sort of really analyzing building by building their special education programs. Her first sort of foray into our district is that she thinks that we're doing a very good job here. So that was great news and nice to see. Mrs. Parsons has started to do an awful lot of work on guided inquiry, and we're really excited about that. That's not a maybe, that's a definite for us. And at some point, maybe that would become some kind of precursor to project-based learning. But what we know about guided inquiry is it gives us that sort of, you know, sort of research and autonomy, those kinds of skills that kids need to be able to really guide their own learning with just assistance from teachers. And we have an awful lot of work going on at the high school. So number five, I may be revising because I think that this minimizes what's actually happening at the high school in terms of SEL. And when Mr. Bishop and I have talked about SEL, you know, we are in agreement that, SEL seems to be that thing that we react to often at the high school level. SEL is probably not dissimilar from, you know, those kinds of implicit biases that we have that just keep building over time in our heads, and one day we become aware of them. I think the same thing sort of happens with social emotional learning. Like, we have kids who, in their very young years, may be tied to technology, may not engage in free play, may begin to develop a social media presence that might be different from who they are in reality, may feel the pressure to succeed at the same levels and in the same disciplines that their peers do, until they get to a place where they realize that they are not who they want to be. And then they struggle, whether it's, you know, academically, socially, or emotionally. And I think that's what gets us into that place at the high school. So while we have that piece there focused on the high school, I'm hoping that a lot of my blogging and information that goes out this year will be information around SEL targeted toward families that have, as we would say, little persons in their house. So you can, again, see that it's tied to the superintendent's rubric. It's tied to our strategic objectives. And you can see the resources are, I think, pretty good there, and I'm happy to take questions.
Can I ask who the consultant is who performed the mini edit?
Yes, yes.
Audit of this bed system?
Her name is Donna Simone.
Donna Simone?
Yeah, S-I-M-O-N-E.
And what is her background?
So she was a special educator and then a special education director for a very long time. But she has had her own consulting business for the past, oh, maybe two decades? Yeah, it's been quite a while. And what I do like about her is, despite the fact that she's been at it a very long time, I think that you'll find that she's very current in the work. So the literature that she presents to us about, you know, kids and profiles and grouping and instructional models was all very current. So that was exciting.
Great, thank you.
Can I only comment on this goal? And we've talked some about this, and I don't know, you know, how we fold this in. But I love that we're bringing in new learning initiatives and the idea of like a STEAM coordinator who can create and offer internships or externships and so forth. It's wonderful. From the consumer perspective, I always wonder if we can't make some headway with stress and student anxiety by helping with goal setting. And so when we're offering more and more and more, how do we help a student pick and choose? And make a plan that is rational? And so the one thing that I was kind of hoping we could kind of get to is some initiative that would help with students', student self-advocacy and goal setting and working with somebody, guidance or otherwise, to kind of look at the menu. And instead of feeling like I have to do it all, how can I pick and choose and get some help with that? Because I think it would come from the bottom up. So I don't know if that can fit in here, but I'll just throw that out there.
So let me think about that at the secondary level.
Yeah.
Like, I know for sure we don't have K to five resources, I don't think, for a goal like that right now. You are doing PBIS work and that sort of thing.
At the elementary level.
So, yeah.
Dr. Kavanaugh, you mentioned a little bit about blogs as a mechanism to reach out to parents, especially around SEL. And, you know, over a period in time, we have discussed this, that families are a big part of the equation, especially when it comes to SEL. Do you think we should do or target more than blogs for this year? Are you able to do that? Are there any thoughts, ideas around that?
So I think historically, you know, if we try to do things like, you know, bring in speakers, I think that those things are sort of met with, you know, I think, limited success. You know, I mean, after parents have worked a full day and put dinner on the table, and then they have to go through the homework process, I think that sometimes just sheer exhaustion keeps people at home. So I'm sort of happy to think about other ways to bring folks in, you know, to that kind of learning, to disseminate that kind of information. I guess there's nothing to stop us also from sending out, you know, sort of an email blast that says, "This is what the blog says," or, you know, "These are some of the other places where you can find resources." I would be more than happy to do that. Here's a great book to read.
If I could add, I think there's a lot of activity.
Sorry?
Oh, no, hi, it's Jen, Mina. I was thinking that there's a lot of activity happening right now in terms of planning at the high school level. And I think that what we've kind of been talking about, or at least what I personally am thinking about, is how SEL can be rolled out in so many different ways. And so at this retreat that Carol was talking about that's happening with the high school next week there, many of the agenda items are targeted to exactly these topics. So talking about student passion and what are topics that we can get students really inspired by, and thinking about different pathways for students that really make sense based on student profiles. And voice and choice is one of the things. So I think we're talking about, or what I'm hearing the high school talk about specifically, is how do we really embed some of this instruction with all of our teachers? And I know they're thinking about providing PD for all teachers and really trying to get them up and running. And I think what you talked about earlier, Carol, was bringing in the SMLs, because they're really some of the movers and shakers in the high school in terms of leading departments. But I think people might feel reassured if we hear at some point from the high school on some of the work that they're doing, because they are doing a lot. It may not take exactly kind of what we all have in our heads. But I think when we see all of these different pieces put together, people will find it to be pretty impressive.
Sure. Thank you for sharing that, Jen. Dr. Kavanaugh, I particularly liked how this goal, you know, touches on so many areas and kids with diverse needs. So I'm excited to see this particular goal unfold.
Great, thank you.
So, in the interest of time, we're going to bring this back again to our next meeting. Because we are actually about 50 minutes behind schedule.
Okay.
So I would like to bring the district website, to jump that ahead, because otherwise, they're going to be hanging out for a long time.
There'll be people weeping in the audience.
And then we can look at what makes sense to move forward, but that has to happen today. And if there's some stuff we want to move to the next meeting, we can do that. But let's go ahead with the website presentation.
Mr. Goesch?
He's like, "Man, I thought I had another hour."
Which, by the way, looks beautiful. It has been exciting to explore it kind of on my own.
Yeah, it's fun. It's very fun.
Fun, fun. Fun or fun?
Fun and funny, all at the same time. I may need.
We have a presentation, I think, that H-Cam has, but we are out of order.
Okay, one.
I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know if he wants me to plug in directly, or do you want to show? Because you're not connected to the screen, right?
No, I think, I don't know. I think if you want to do a live walkthrough of your site, you have to plug in directly.
Yeah, in the past, they've run a cable to that screen.
Goes well beyond my technological.
I'll just wait for something magical to happen. There it is.
There we go.
What's up?
They are available online. If you go through the town website, I know it's on there for sure. If you click on the town calendar.
Oh, we have that.
Oh, yeah. We have a viewer.
Yes, at the time, we did not have yours. Okay, we're gonna take a break then. So we're gonna take like a five-minute break, since we will no longer have corn. Technological break for five minutes.
I'll be back in five minutes as well.
Okay, Mina.
Thank you.
You'll hold down the fort here together?
We will.
I was concerned about getting up with, when that didn't work.
I can't. Yeah. Because you can't control?
What will happen is, once you click that link on the PowerPoint, because this is an extended screen, the link is going to show up on the main screen, and we'll be able to control it from the PowerPoint.
And then do you have, I think Carol has the controller for the slide, yeah, that we can forward and leave that up there, and then we can show the website from here, if that works.
Our topic is so fun, we lost our audience.
So you're gonna do the first couple slides, man, and then?
Yeah, that's good.
Live.
Yep.
All within 14 minutes and 15 minutes.
Ready, go.
But we're an hour behind. You actually have to do it in negative.
You have any questions about the website? Here's our home.
Home number. All right, we'll talk after a show.
Hey, Jen, good to see you.
All right.
I think I stole you guys' notes.
No, no, we just, no, I just wanted to do the regular one. I did the one that we talked about in the meeting.
It's so to be shook, our topic is so exciting, that people just flit.
No, I know, now everybody's doing lapses down the hallway waiting for the bathroom.
Oh, no.
Playlist, a playlist that will be updated. So we're gonna call it current, current pillar seasons. And then whatever ones that we're covering will all show up there. So the girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and volleyball, they'll all show up right from that link. And they'll switch out at a big date without you having to update the website.
Yeah, that'd be cool. But I think we should have at least all those, and then. And you have any questions?
Today, yeah.
Once you've seen it, I can't you get.
Yes. Yeah, so you just have one block that shows the current, but you can also see past ones from. Has she been there a couple? Yeah, for sure, it's like first.
We may need to, my discovery, we may need to adjust the color of the orange.
Oh, really? Do the accessibility?
The biggest issue is the hocky-ton orange on the text. The contrast difference between that orange and the white doesn't meet the minimum ratio.
Interesting.
Of three to one. It's like one to 2.91. So I emailed them to say, and the same thing's happening with the footer. The white phone numbers, the contrast between the white and the green isn't great enough to meet the minimum AA accessibility standard. And so there's errors on, since those two things appear on like every page, pretty much.
Yeah.
So I emailed, finally said afterwards, we might have altered the orange. Make it, open it up to make it darker, a little brighter, just to reduce the contrast there.
That's good to know. Did site improve, sign that?
Yeah, I was looking through site improve last night.
Are we on?
So that's the biggest thing that we have to work on. And then, in terms of your, we can find a screen reader, but the best thing for, it does do a screen reader.
Are we on simulation?
Simulation, because of the hands. And so we have a few pages where we have to.
So I'll stop doing arm lifts.
Screen readers will work normally, so.
So, Mina, are you back? Mina? So Mina is not here, but I'm.
Carol, I think you are the slide controller when we start.
Oh, yes, I am.
That's where we're at.
Actually, I'll just send it down to you.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, it took some time.
That's okay. All right, so we are all here then. We are ready to go ahead with the presentation.
Okay, so we are resuming with the website subcommittee report. We're behind schedule, so I'll move as quickly as we can. We have a few slides, and Mr. Goesch is going to do some live highlights from the website of what to look at, so. Okay, so before we start, I just want to take a minute to thank a whole lot of people for getting us to where we are today. We have a website subcommittee. One of our members is here. Amy Ritter-Bush is in the audience. And if you want to sit there, if you want to come up, or you can chime in as we go through this if you have any thoughts. But we had a whole lot of subcommittee members, both people on the tech team, different administrators and administrative assistants in the district, and a bunch of parents who spanned many grades. And I can honestly say that everybody made significant contributions, either with, you know, comments, suggestions, insights into usage. It was really a team effort from the subcommittee in terms of getting to our design in particular. So I cannot thank folks enough. I don't think they knew what they signed up for when they agreed to be on the subcommittee. And we still have them trapped for a couple more months, I think, but it's been great. But the real work happened with Mr. Goesch and his team, and they have been amazing. The deadline was extremely aggressive. The scope of the work is huge, and they've worked tirelessly. So many were on the, some were on the subcommittee, and there are many others you can see in the slide who just have given a ton of time, energy, effort, and knowledge and skill to make this happen. So please pass on, Mr. Goesch, our sincere thanks to everybody for their efforts. To your team. The district leadership team and content owners. People may not realize how much work they have had to do to look at their content, write new content, look at new pictures, find new information. look at new pictures, find new information to share. And it's going to keep going. We're still working on that. So, it's, you know, sort of unbudgeted time that we're asking for. They're finding ways to make it happen. So, thank you to all of them. You would pass that on, Dr. Kavanaugh. And the school committee for your support, and of course, the families and communities. Right now, I'm going to thank you for being a little bit patient as we get through the rollout, and then just for your support and feedback and comments as we go live. Let's begin on the next slide. So, Mr. Gosh is going to just take a minute and point out some new features that are important for people to be aware of as they're trying to use the new site. So, I will pass it over to him, and hopefully, H-Cam can show the screen.
So, hopefully, I'm kind of... If you can see the screen, I've got the screen over here. So, the current site, the district homepage is live. And the school sites, I mean, I think, Amanda, you're going to talk about when the school sites come up next. But so currently, I think that some of the changes for families and kind of staff. On the homepage, what's different, as you look across the header, is that we have this utility menu up top, which will get you to the various schools. These schools links aren't active yet. They're just redirecting to the homepage because they're not ready. But as soon as those go live on August 5th, these school pages will be working. The next big kind of button is student and families. And student families is meant to be a landing page for students, the families, to kind of come and find all things relative to them and have quick links out to other resources so they can get to them quickly. Staff doesn't... Won't work for families. That's a portal, so that's designed for staff so we can put private information up there, or certain forms that staff may need. So, staff have a login to that, and that gets them into the portal where they'll have those resources available. And then, the last one on the right is Find It Fast. And so, this is pretty important. I think we've had a couple of questions from the community about this. But when people are looking for those quick links, this is where families should kind of quickly go as well. So, a lot of the old quick links of how to get to calendars, how to get to lunch menus, how to make payments are all kind of listed here on this page. So, we really kind of advise parents to kind of get used to going here, looking for information. Or there's quite a robust search engine embedded. So, like, for example, Naviance is one thing that maybe parents are looking for. If you just type in Naviance, you'll get some search results. And if for some reason it's not working, I encourage parents to email us through the webmaster email, and we can kind of fine-tune the search so that we cover all the really popular forums, articles, resources here so they can get to them quickly. So, for example, we customize Naviance so that you can, for example, actually get a link directly to it. So, if you search Naviance, the link will show up. You click to it, and away you go, and you have access to that. So, the search is pretty robust, and it will get better as we add details to it. So, that is available. Quick links are down below for most of the common resources that parents are trying to get to. Then, kind of back at the homepage, I think the key is to think about, in terms of the calendar, I think that's a big change for families. We'll rotate some of the key events here through the calendar. What we've tried to work on for families, which was a big ask, was the time. So, we're trying to make sure the specific time is available for the event and a very specific location is available for the event. So, what you'll see for location primarily will be the building, and then maybe a dash with the actual location within the building. We've gone back and forth and talked about, well, should we put in the actual address for the building there? But we're finding that that's not really useful. And it's not necessarily specific enough for existing parents. And our hope was, well, if we put the address in there, maybe on a mobile device, you click the address, it'll map you there, but that doesn't really work. So, adding along address is not helpful. So, I want people to understand that you'll see the school, and then if there's a specific location available within the school, we'll put that right after the location. The other big thing for parents to kind of remember, and Amy's done a good job of kind of helping us remember to tell people, is that you should take down and remove old calendars. So, if you're subscribing to the old calendars, Google calendars, you should remove those and delete those because we're no longer really populating those old calendars. We have new calendars that we've created, and you should subscribe to those. So, to do that, you know, as a parent, the best way is if you're on the homepage, you can click View Full Calendar Mode. There are some basic instructions on how to do this on the right-hand side of how to add the new ones. But the key is seeing this little RSS feed icon in the top right of the calendar. And when you click on that, you'll get all the iCal feeds of all the calendars that are available. And so, you'll click on those, and those are the URLs that you want to add or subscribe to, and those will be the new calendars. So, it's important to remove the old ones and add these new ones, and you'll be good to go. So, that covers calendars. Down below, just give most people an idea. These are going to be our news and announcement area, this middle section of the homepage. This will also be the same on the school-level pages. So, you know, current news, information, we'll kind of rotate through the slider. Often, if there's additional details available, you can click with any image, and you'll get a little pop-up with details about the news. There's a full news page. If you want to see all the news, you just click on the full news page, and it'll take you there. The next section, the Highlights from the Hill section, is designed to have more specific information, longer stories, blog posts. So, Dr. Kavanaugh's blog posts, we've put and connected down here. Other stories about Lombardi, the therapy dogs, other longer stories about the student of the month, maybe will be here, or for highlighting a certain faculty member, we'd put those stories down in this section. And then, the lower part just feeds some facts and figures about the district. And then, the social media Instagram account for the district will appear at the bottom. So, that kind of covers the homepage. What are some other big... Any other big things, Amanda, that you want to talk about? I know we're kind of limited on time.
Yeah.
Find It Fast was big.
Yeah, the Find It Fast. I mean, I think in general, we spent a lot of time trying to design an information structure that was intuitive. So, the homepage, the menus are sort of designed the way the information is, like academics, extracurricular, or district departments, and so forth. The top menu bar, like the students and families, that's more for how the user looks at it, and how you can get at the same information but from like a more user-specific role. So, I think for most families, Find It Fast will be your best friend. You can do a quick search. I mean, we in the policy subcommittee were working on a policy, and I thought, uh-oh, I'm going to try the new Find It search. And don't you know, the policy came right up. It was great. It was really easy. And I think the more people get comfortable that our search does now work, the better. And if people are looking for things, as you said, and they're not indexed, or they can't find them, provide some feedback through the webmaster email, and we can get things indexed. Because I think Find It Fast is going to be a great tool for folks.
Athletics, and I know we're going to talk about developments, but athletics page is still being developed, you know, building out team schedules and things, and Amanda's going to get to that. The campus map is finally changed and updated, so just so all the school committee and the community is aware of that. We kind of just got hot off the presses last night, the new, basically, campus map. So, it's kind of displayed over here. So, we reworked the campus map. We added Elmwood School and Marathon to the map with a legend. We updated and added the Cross Country Trail kind of mapped out around there, and so, and some of the rules. So, that's available. It's up on the website. There's a PDF version of it. And those can be downloaded at the bottom of the map, either JPEG or a PDF version. So, those are available. We shared them out with the town, so that Parks and Recs has access to it. And so, that's a new addition. So, we're excited. Any other general questions about? Yeah, sure. So, the best way to demonstrate the translate button, I, you know, policy page or any of the school committee policies is a good way to kind of look at that. So, if you navigate to anything on the web, it's in HTML typically. So, here's an example of Policy AC. If you click on Translate, you'll get a dropdown list of all the available languages within Google Translate. And you can just kind of pick a language, and the policy or the page, the text will automatically translate for you. And then, you can re-click on the page and then convert it back to English if you need to at the top, and it changes the page. So, that's readily available. It sits up top. As you kind of go from page to page, the translate button always stays up top in that utility menu for community or users to have access to.
One other thing. Alan, I was just looking for the school committee agenda, which is actually not there, so...
Yes, we talked about...
Okay.
Yeah, we're in our transition. We haven't totally gone operational with this.
Yeah, we're working... People at the central office that are charged with that have just been trained, and they're going to start working on adding the menus.
But I would encourage folks to, if you have five minutes, either on your phone, because it's now mobile, or at home, explore a little bit, because our district department heads and so forth have done some really interesting new work on articulating what our departments are all about. What the... Mrs. Parsons did a great job of articulating an overview of our curriculum for the district. And there's some really interesting new content that I think will help communicate with families what we, as a district, are trying to do. So, I really encourage you to explore a little bit, and, you know, let us know what you think. So, just back over to the slides. I don't know if H-Cam is transitioning, but I wanted to talk quickly about our next steps. Mr. Gosh mentioned that on August 5th, we're going to roll out Phase 2. I think we may have said it was August 15th in our email, so surprise, it's coming early. That never happens. That will be the rollout for the school homepages and the pages that are related to the school homepages. At that point, there will also hopefully be the athletics overviews by sport. Not the full... Maybe the full detail for athletics for all teams at all levels, but the overview, like what is field hockey and so forth? What is the program? Who are the coaches, coach contacts, and so forth? And I'll just say that there is a huge effort underway to continually update content. We understand that, as you mentioned in our email to the community, we are in a transitional launch phase right now. So, we know there's more content that needs to go out there. We're still tweaking it and adding. So, I would say, keep looking. By August 5th, a lot of the basics should be covered. And then, I imagine the weeks between August 5th and the start of the school year will continue to add and build out our content. In late September, the website subcommittee will issue a community satisfaction survey. We had surveyed way back when about what people wanted, and so now, we want to circle back about a month or so in and say, "Did you get what you wanted?" Is this... "We thought we heard you. This is what we think you said. Is it working?" And at that point, we'll come back to school committee with results on that. And just so people know, there are a lot of discussions ongoing, again, to continue to build this great new tool that we have. Mr. Gosh and Ms. King are looking at the athletics events calendar. There are some complications with linking it to the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association. So, we're trying to figure out the best solution for parents and teams to get the right information on calendaring and so forth. There's a lot of discussion there. There's a lot of discussion that will happen probably next week with the website subcommittee. We've been asked to look at the district community page and maybe figure out what text should be on there. There's some text up there now, but we're going to revisit that, figure out if there are more FAQs that we should add, and then take another pass at the structure of the student and families portal and make sure the layout... If we want to move things around, that's a pretty easy shift. So, make sure there's nothing that... Easy that we should do to make that more usable. The school committee, we will have to have an agenda item, Mina and Nancy, to look at our content in particular, just to talk about ways that we can use the tool to best communicate our policies. It's up there, but there may be some tweaking that we can do. We have some constraints, because now our site is really great on the phone as well. It's mobile. And that changes a little bit of how we use tables and other constructs that we used in the past. So, we will have to talk some about our content. And we also are looking at PDFs in translation. Like, when we have PDFs, we have eliminated most of them, but there are a few. And when we have them, and we have them also in Mandarin and Spanish, where do we put them? Where does it make most sense? And that's a conversation with Ms. Kimball and Mr. Gosh. So, there's a lot of that kind of work still going on. So, if you see something, you think, oh, gosh, that doesn't seem like it's quite right, probably there's a conversation going on. Feel free to flag it, but there is still a lot of work going on. The subcommittee was specifically tasked with keeping us on budget and on timeline, so I want to just touch base on this. We originally budgeted $45,000 for the development and delivery of this site. We went through several design iterations with Final Site to get our layouts the way we wanted them, and to also add some layouts to accommodate some tricky data that we had. It ran a little bit over budget, as most major website projects do, but not too much. And Mr. Gosh was able to fund the gap of $3,500 or so through his existing IT budget so that we ended up still within generally the confines of our original ask. There were some related investments. As Mr. Gosh mentioned, there's a great new campus map, which was mandated, because we have changed. We've added a parking lot now where we had a field, and things have shifted with the turf field. So, that was already on the agenda, but it does tie nicely into the website. We get to reap the rewards. And that was paid for out of an anticipated expense from the IT budget. The timeline, we are targeting a July launch. We were constrained by the cost of running our old site. So, we had to get off, or we had to pay for another year. So, that really lit the fire under everybody. And I'm really impressed with both Final Site and the IT project team that we got there, which is why it's not 100% perfect. We sort of sacrificed perfection on July 1st. But it's really great and very close. By August 5th, we'll be pretty complete.
I would say it'd take a year to two years to do the migration that we did in about three months.
Yeah. It was a crazy and aggressive...
I didn't believe we were going to do it in three months.
Aggressive timeline. So, it's... I feel, you know, very proud of the work that you guys did, because I don't know how you did it. So, it's great that you got there. And Final Site ended up being a good partner in getting there and turning things around as well. We were able to shut off the old site on time, so we did not incur any additional hosting charges. And as I mentioned, the content updates will be ongoing. We had like three main key new deliverables, accessibility, translation, and it being mobile-friendly. I don't want to go on forever, but I think we're well on track to meet those needs. We are working with Final Site to get a few kinks worked out with the accessibility, with our coloring, the contrast. Mr. Gosh said our orange and our green contrast is not quite strong enough, so we'll probably be adjusting our colors a little bit through Mr. Gosh's analytics tools. He's been able to confirm that we're pretty... We're meeting the accessibility guidelines, except in those two areas. So, there's a little bit more work to be done. Translation is working nicely, as you saw. We have eliminated... It's been a lot of work to take away the PDFs and switch to HTML so that it can be translated. And I think, you know, Megan and Georgette and a lot of people who worked on that converting those, and Linda and so forth. Let's see, and mobile-friendly. those, and Linda and so forth. Um, let's see, and mobile friendly, um, I'm, I think a lot of parents spend a lot of time on their phones, so hopefully we will hear that people are having success in navigating on mobile. Um, we had to do a lot of work to get there, but hopefully, um, people are happy with that.
That's great.
And finally, um, find it fast and site search are your new best friends, um, and if you still struggle, please email webmaster@hopkinton.k12.na.us, and that will go to Mr. Goesch and Mrs. Henderson, who are tracking, um, community feedback and questions and issues. And the website subcommittee, just so Mina, you and Nancy know, I think we're probably gonna run through about mid-October. We wanna see the survey results come in, see if there's anything, you know, significant that has to happen there, but probably around mid-October to late October, we will, um, be coming forward to disband, because at that point, I think our charter will be fulfilled. Questions?
Wow.
Bravo.
Yeah.
Looks really good.
Thank you.
Looks great.
Wow is absolutely right. I think fabulous, fabulous work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody?
I, I have more to say. I, I didn't mean to cut off if Jen or whoever said the first one wants to say something.
Nope, I think it's all you there. I think you're all.
Um, so I'm so in love with this website. Um, it's so sleek, it's, you know, easy to navigate. Uh, it's fun to navigate, actually, and I love all the pictures. I love the fact that, you know, there are profiles of all the educators, you know, some of their backgrounds are shared. Uh, I'm excited to see our safety, our, uh, SROs pictures there. Uh, it looks like such thoughtful work, and, you know, it was done in such a methodical manner, what you have shared here, Amanda and Mr. Goesch. I know this is, you know, you tried to put the work in a few slides, but I can see how much more has gone in, just looking at all the little details that you've taken care of. From the time, um, the committee was launched to, uh, the time that you have been able to do this launch, it's a really short time. And content and being thoughtful around all of this, kudos to the entire, um, subcommittee, and each and every one of the volunteers and staff members who worked so hard to make this happen. Um, I'm sure there are things to work on as you listed, um, but this is a great achievement. Um, so thank you so much for working on this.
Thank you.
Others?
Amy, did you have anything else?
All right. Very well done, then. Uh, that will move us then if there are no more comments on this. I, I would like to propose that we look, just 'cause we're running about an hour behind schedule at this point, uh, in moving a couple of things to August, um, in, unless people are, wanna continue through, but I, in looking at the agenda, and we had discussed during agenda planning that some of these things, specific, I think we had said, Mina, the, the school committee norms, we could move till August, is that correct? That was my recollection, we had said if we had to move things in the meeting, got too long.
That, that's right. Um, and the reason for that is that the school committee, uh, as it is, has been around, and we have worked with Dr. Kavanaugh, we absolutely want to revise, but don't have to do it at this meeting.
Right, and I would also suggest that perhaps we consider looking at the full liaison roles and the presentation in August as well, to kinda try to buy back close to a half an hour, so we're only a half an hour over.
I am absolutely fine with that as well, and if we want to push back on the calendar discussion too, I think that's fine too. I think the dates are already out there. If there are any comments or changes, we can, uh, make those.
Okay.
So I'm fine with that as well, Nancy.
All right, so do you want people that have comments individually to reach out to you individually, and we'll bring it back as an agenda item in August if that works for people?
Yes, I think that sounds good.
And, and then I guess I would suggest that we go on to Old Business B, 'cause I'm assuming that's why Mr. Keller is-
Yes, he is here for Old Business B and Old Business C.
That's right, I called you out of order, sorry.
No, that's all right. Good afternoon, thank you.
Hi.
Um, so I have, um, two field trip, uh, permission final approval forms, uh, that I'd like to bring in front of you today. The first is Nature's Classroom. This actually would mark, if approved, the 27th year that we would attend Nature's Classroom. Um, the dates are Tuesday, October 15th through Friday, October 18th, and the cost of the program per student is $360, um, for each family, per student, I should say. Um, so, in Nature's Classroom, for those that are unaware, is a overnight field trip that takes place in Charlton, Massachusetts. It's for our grade six students. Uh, it's a science-based, uh, field trip, um, where our students have an opportunity to participate in experiments. Um, there's, um, whole group activities. There's also, students have an opportunity to sign up for different elective types of programs, uh, that run, that, that run during, over the course of those three days. Shall I do, um, New York City as well, or take them one at a time?
I think we can go ahead if you want.
You can vote this one, and then we'll do New York.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, seek a motion to approve the, uh, grade six Nature's Classroom.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's a motion by Meg, second by Amanda. We'll do a roll call, starting with you, Meg.
Aye.
Amanda, Jen, me is, I'm a yes, and Mina?
Aye.
Okay, so that is approved, and we'll go into the New York City then.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, the, also, similar to Nature's Classroom, um, seeking final approval for our New York City trip, uh, for grade eight, uh, next, or this coming school year. The dates are Wednesday, June 10th through Friday, June 12th. Um, the cost on New York City on this trip is a little bit more than last year, so it's actually, uh, $779 per student. Uh, that compares to $755 this past year, uh, largely due to, uh, the number of students. So at, at present, I know Dr. Kavanaugh was mentioning enrollment earlier, uh, at present, our current eighth grade is at 235, though I think that might be 239 now, I think I saw it earlier. Um, but, um, it comes down to numbers, and so it, the cost per student goes up when we have less students. Uh, we had 280 students attend in 2019, so, um, so as I mentioned, the cost is 779 per student. Um, and, um, you know, New York City, we, this past year, we attended, uh, when we arrived, we went to the Statue of Liberty, uh, we were able to attend To Kill a Mockingbird on Broadway this past year, which is a book that we read in eighth grade. Um, we have a dinner and boat cruise. We attended this past year the Museum of Modern Art, uh, the 9/11 Museum, and a variety of other activities that, uh, tie into our curriculum as, as much as we, as we can.
That's great.
Questions, comments? Okay, then I would seek a motion to approve the grade eight, uh, trip to New York City.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion by Meg, second by Amanda. We'll do a roll call, starting with you, Meg.
Aye.
Aye.
Jen, I'm a yes, Mina?
Aye.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope your summer's going well.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yes it is.
That's great, thank you. So then, well, that allows us to go back to where we, um, originally went out of order, which was at New Business, item F, which is the tech voting member participant. My understanding was this was a time-sensitive?
This one is time-sensitive. In fact, tech called us the other day looking for our voting member, so I think we need to wrap this one up. Um, Mina has served as our tech voting member for the past year. Um, unlike other collaboratives, tech will allow either a school committee member or the superintendent to be their voting member, so we are looking for someone to take on that role. Um, and, and, you know, as we always say about tech, they are a great organization. It's a collaborative that affords us professional learning, special education services, it just, it does it off a lot, so.
And just for, to refresh my memory and to make sure we all have the understanding, it, there's, also, if, if the voting member is a school committee member, you still go as well, and vice versa, if you're the voting, or the superintendent's the voting member, a school committee member can still go-
I go to some of them.
Okay.
They also do superintendent, uh, lunch meetings, so I always go to the superintendent lunch meeting, and do you go to some of the assistant superintendent meetings?
Yeah.
So it's right for job-like.
For clarification, what is the, I know the meeting days and times are fairly standard each month?
Yeah, they're Friday mornings at nine o'clock in Walpole, is that correct, Mina?
Um, 8:15 is the time, uh, people start getting together. 8:30 is the starting time. I would say it's about a 45-minute drive from Hopkinton, and there's usually not much traffic, uh, Friday morning, you're going against traffic, but it is a good 45-minute drive. Um, I personally think it's a fabulous opportunity, um, to learn, to connect with people, um, and also to see, uh, a different, um, you know, uh, being part of a different board and how that is managed. So you're gonna get a very good feel for it, fabulous people. Uh, we don't have any students going to tech at the moment, uh, however, the services that they offer and the opportunity to network is great. What I was thinking was, given the time commitment, uh, what ends up happening is many times they're short on quorum. So, pretty much every time someone should be there, the voting member, you know, I, I think it's important that the person be there physically present, right? Versus a liaison that we assign from the school committee, uh, we can choose based on the agenda to participate. So I was hoping that if Dr. Kavanaugh had, um, the bandwidth to be the, uh, voting member, uh, because they look at all the budgets, they look at a bunch of those, uh, documents to approve on, and we can have someone else, you know, I, was it Jen who was showing some interest?
Well, I am interested, yeah, I just, I, that's, you're right, it's, that's a tricky time. 8:15 on a Friday morning is a tricky time, but, yeah.
Yeah, I could do that.
So-
Are you, is that adding, are you good with that, though? I mean-
Yes, there are a lot of superintendents who do go to the Friday morning at 8:15 time.
Okay, and is it every month, every other, twice a month?
It's once a month.
Once a month?
Yeah, yes, it is once a month. Um, like I said, you know, we can have Dr. Kavanaugh be the voting member, but we can still have someone else give it a try this year as a, as a liaison. I have enjoyed it thoroughly. Um, like I said, excellent networking opportunity. So this way, uh, you would have an opportunity to pick and choose which days you want to go based on the topic, and actually, those sessions are open to other school committee members. Also, as I shared, I suggested four topics possibly, um, for consideration for the upcoming year, uh, for sessions, that could be open to school committee members. So, in last year, uh, Nancy, Amanda and I, uh, went to the legislative breakfast in February, so there are events which are open to all.
Okay, so-
If you're interested, it's fine, I can't do it.
So I think all we need to determine right now is the voting member.
Okay, good.
So, uh, all right, if you're comfortable, and that's what Mina's suggesting, do we wanna have a motion to appoint Dr. Kavanaugh as the voting member of tech, and then we can come back to think about for the liaison roles next month, who wants to do the-
As long as you're comfortable with that.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with it?
Yes, for sure. Okay, all right, so moved.
Second. So a roll call?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
I'm a yes, and Mina?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you very much. That moves us into item G, which is FY20 gas and electric contracts with, uh, excuse me, with Ms. Rothermark.
Thank you. Um, so, basically, what I'm looking for are, um, both gas and electric, uh, supply contracts will be expiring, uh, one in the fall and one in the spring. Um, so what I'm looking to do is procure and, and negotiate those contracts now. Um, right now, the energy market is at a low, and energy is a commodity. It's one of those things that every 24 hours, the prices will, will change. So we do work with a broker, Tradition Energy, um, who will go and get the prices for me, and they expire within 24 hours. So when we get the best rates, basically, is when I would like to be able to execute that contract. So I'm looking for the school committee to authorize that. And basically, from a budgeting standpoint, um, the, the costs are coming in pretty much at, um, either at the, at our current rate or below. Gas is coming in below, um, so it, it should not have a negative bu- budget impact, is, is basically what I'm saying.
Great. All right, so I would seek, unless there are questions?
No.
Seek a motion to approve Ms. Rothermark to, the authority to negotiate and execute in good faith for FY20 gas and electric contracts.
So moved.
Second.
So, roll call with Meg?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Yes, and Mina?
Aye.
Okay, so that so carries, and that moves us then into the expense transfer approval for school lunches.
So what we do every year, by law, uh, we are not allowed to carry deficit accounts in the school lunch, um, a revolving account, because this is federal and state directives. So each year, we do budget for an estimated, uh, negative balance. So you can see our negative balance at the end of this year was actually higher than what we had budgeted. And just so you know, uh, in an effort, um, emails are sent out weekly, where, so it is an automatic, when somebody goes into a deficit, an email is, is sent out, um, at, at each week notifying parents of a deficit account. When they get into a large balance, then personal phone calls are also made. Um, but again, we need to, by law, to fund, uh, reimburse the revolving account for those deficit accounts.
Okay, in that case, uh, absent any questions, I would seek a motion to approve the transfer from the operating budget expense to the school lunch revolving account.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call with Meg?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
I'm a yes, and Mina?
Aye.
Okay, so that so carries, and that moves us then into the approval of expense transfers. You're really on a roll here.
Uh, actually, um, school lunch staff.
Did I, I jumped over?
Jumped one.
Oh, thank you, yes.
So next year, I, in an effort to basically lessen the number of kids that are in each lunch period, uh, most of the schools are actually adding a lunch period. Um, but in addition, so there will be four lunches, right now there's three. When they're adding it, they're not extending that period of time, what they're doing is taking away the time in between lunches, so that makes it a real crunch for staff to be prepared for that next lunch. Um, and we're in an effort to do more batch cooking, so that means that at nine o'clock in the morning, all the food is not ready, that is gonna be served all the way until one o'clock. So you're cooking as you go along, um, so as you're adding lunch periods and squeezing the time, um, the addition of staff is, is needed, um, in order to implement and really keep the, the food going and the kids going throughout. So you can see with, um, some of the positions, what we're doing is really just increasing their time a little bit, and what it will be is, it will be an up to. Um, so, in some, um, kitchens, you may not need that full amount of time, but this gives them the flexibility that, you know, with the crunch of students, if they do need that time, we can hire the general workers up to the 3.95, the managers up to the 6.5, and the, uh, secondary managers up to the eight hours. Um, in addition, there is a new general worker position needed pretty much at every school, and then the addition of a clerk, um, but also eliminating a float position, which is what we did put in place this year, earlier, that was brought to the school committee. So the total changes adds up to 2.8 FTEs for approximately $51,000, and this would be paid for out of the lunch revolving account.
Okay. Questions on that?
Just, thank, thank you for, to the staff for looking at, um, this problem and adding the lunches. I think this makes a big difference to the students during the day, that they have time to eat, and that they can, um, you know, get through the line, and adding a lunch where necessary, I think will definitely help that, so.
Well, adding the lunch is really a principal decision.
Yeah.
So that, that's, that's not a-
No, I know, but I mean, this is support to that activity.
But in order to facilitate that, that's great.
Yeah, if we didn't do this, that would, that wouldn't be able to be feasible, so it's all one bundle, so I think it's great.
Yeah. I, also, I think it's great that the way that you have brought in the new way of doing food services in the past year has increased demand. I think that speaks highly of the program itself, so.
So not every school is doing this, you said, necessarily?
Uh, I, I think in the last, um, that I saw, they all are.
Oh, they all are, okay, okay.
Some waited until the very last minute, so.
I just think Hopkins may not be. Hopkins might be the one school that is not doing that. I think high school, middle school, Elmwood and Marathon will all have four lunches.
Yeah, middle school always had four lunches.
Yes. Okay. I had asked, and I, just so people know, I mean, I asked if the actual eating time per student would decrease to accommodate this, and I, we were told no. It's the passing time, or the transition time that's been cut.
Yeah.
So they already eat pretty quickly, they don't have to eat any faster, it's, it's staying the same. And actually, increasing in one school, I think.
Elmwood will actually have more time to eat, yes.
Yeah, that's great.
And tell about the kiosk.
So what's-
I think this is great. Maybe I'm, I'm overzealous about it, I don't know.
Well, what we have been doing is really, you know, looking at all of our equipment, and that, not just in the kitchen, but district-wide, and, you know, making those decisions of repair versus replace. Um, so in each of the kitchens, they will all now have a steamer unit, which is a, a unit that only right now the Marathon has, because it's a brand-new kitchen. Um, so it helps to facilitate, so you have an oven, you have a cooktop, uh, and now you have a steamer, so it helps to facilitate and cook food faster. Um, so that's one thing that will happen. A couple of schools also got new warming units, so as you, um, are batch cooking the food, you now have a warming unit that's right there at the line. So all of this will facilitate being able to keep the line and, and stock and move it faster. Um, in addition, what we're doing at the high school is, we're putting in place a kiosk, which will have the grab-and-go items, and that will be on the opposite side of the, where you walk into the kitchen. So it'll be in the cafeteria, but over on the opposite side, again, to kinda spread the kids, um, so the kids that are just looking for that grab-and-go can go to the kiosk and, um, you know-
That's great.
Move and, and be on their way. So all really in an effort to, you know, get our equipment up to speed, what it needs to be to fill the lines, to cook more efficiently, um, you know, and do the best to move the kids through the lines.
Okay, that's great.
That's great.
Okay, all right, then are we ready for a-
See, everyone's excited.
Very. You know, again, it goes to the staffing, so if you put a kiosk, you need staff.
That's right.
So, are we ready for a motion to approve, uh, the additional school lunch staff request as outlined in the memorandum?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so a roll call, starting with Meg?
Aye.
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 Yes.
I am a yes, and Mina?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Then that brings us into the approval of expense transfers.
So the approval of the expense transfers, we spoke a little bit about with the final financial report in the very beginning of the meeting. And again, just to lessen our use of the building use revolving and lessen our use of the circuit breaker. And again, that sets us up financially to, for future budgets.
Questions? Okay, then I would seek a motion to approve the expense transfer request as outlined for FY 19.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mina?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. And that moves us into approval for rooftop solar site agreement.
So again, back in January, we had spoken about potential alternative energy opportunities for the district. So one of the contracts, which would be the PPA for the Marathon School, what you need legally is this site access agreement. The vendor would be coming and installing the solar equipment, but it is not equipment that becomes the property of Hopkins and Public Schools. They retain ownership of that. So in order for them to do that, which is different than a vendor coming and putting in a piece of equipment that then becomes the property of the Hopkins and Public Schools. So in order for them to do that legally, this is a document that the attorney drew up, which is this access agreement, which would allow them to do that.
Any questions? Then I would seek a motion to approve the Director of Finance the authority to execute the rooftop solar site access agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Second, and a roll call, starting with Meg?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mina?
Yes.
Okay, and that so carries. And we had agreed that we were going to move, come back to the school committee norms. We've already done the old business A, B, and C. So that brings us into old business D, which is policy BEHD, public participation at school committee meetings. And that's on for you, Dr. Kavanaugh.
Okay. So I know that we had talked about this last time. And the one concern that people had, I think with policy BEDH, as it was written, is that in sort of copying verbatim NADEx policy, which did come recommended to us through ACLU and MASSS, one of the things that they have in their policy was that there would be a sign-up sheet, kind of giving people an order in which they would present, and then also a limitation to the number of people who could present, because they had sort of capped their public speak at 15 minutes. So the iteration that you see in front of us really is just that iteration with the removal of the sign-up sheet, but with everything else pretty much looking the same.
And we did receive, I think we all received, community feedback with support of that.
Yes.
Yep.
So. Any other comments or questions?
I guess I just want to, was someone saying something?
Nope.
Which I didn't hear?
I think it's you.
I guess, you know, I appreciate the feedback that we received and from the Chair of the Youth Commission around the sign-up sheet. I think that was very valid. I just want to reiterate the fact that what we are trying to do here is to ensure that we're able to conduct the school committee business, as has been outlined, and that the public comment section, we just want to ensure that it's, you know, time is set and there is a process in place. Of course, if there is an issue of concerns, concern for the community, we should look for ways to bring it into the school committee agenda and consideration in an appropriate manner. So this is in no way an attempt to, you know, suppress voices or to cut down conversations at all. You know, based on the topic that comes up, that concerns the community, it might be something that comes on the agenda. It could end up with some kind of a forum that we think of. So all of those options will continue to remain.
Great.
Great, thank you.
So I would then seek a motion, right? Let me just make sure I have the wording right here. I think we are ready for a motion on this. Is that, people ready to move this?
Yep.
Okay. Then I would seek a motion to approve policy BEHD, public participation at school committee meetings, as outlined in the agenda.
So moved.
It's BEDH.
Oh, it says BEHD on the agenda, so that should be.
We should, well, check it.
Find it fast.
But.
There you go.
BEDH.
It's the title at the top.
BEDH is the correct title?
Yeah.
I think it's probably just a typo in the packet.
I think it is, too.
All right, so a motion to, do you want to double-check that just to be sure?
I think it is, BEDH. I did find it fast on the new website.
I did find it fast. All right, then I would seek a motion to approve policy BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings, as outlined in our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call?
Aye.
Aye, yes.
I'm a yes, and Mina? Mina, on policy BEDH. Okay, so that so carries, and that moves us into item E, which is IJOA, field trips for a second reading, Dr. Kavanaugh.
Yes, we also looked at this last time we were together. I think that the only substantial change to IJOA in category two, we have included athletic, steam, music, art, and club trips. And then we have also added, on the second page, a number six and a number seven. The previous policy used to stop at number five, evidence of thoroughness and planning. So what we've done is we've added the existence of a clearly defined emergency communication plan related to both individual student emergencies and emergency changes to the trip itinerary in general, and then the potential impact on student attendance at school. So for example, if a field trip, an international field trip is coming back on a Sunday night, or they're leaving on a Friday morning, that would obviously impact kids being in school on Friday or Monday. And then the next last paragraph at the bottom of the page also sort of spells that out. For any field trip, there must be a documented emergency communication plan and so forth. So those, I think, are the two significant changes to that policy. There's also just a little introductory line, I think, on the front that says this policy defines three categories. But other than that, it's.
Any questions or comments? Okay, I think this one, then, if we didn't receive any feedback on this through the public, I know it was shared. No feedback. Mina, did you receive any feedback on this?
No, I did not.
Dr. Kavanaugh, the people who actually chaperone trips regularly felt comfortable, right, with these two?
Yes, I think so, yep.
Then I guess I would seek a motion to approve policy IJOA, field trips, as outlined in the agenda packet.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call, starting with you, Meg?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Mina?
Yes.
Okay, that's great, thank you very much. That moves us down. We actually have managed to catch up very nicely here. If we want to have any future agenda items, if there are any things that people would like us to consider bringing up on future agendas.
I think that we need, oh, sorry. Sorry, Mina.
Mina?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that this was something that Nancy had introduced last year, and we had played with that a little bit. And I think in our discussion at the last meeting, there was a request to bring this back, and Nancy very thoughtfully suggested we do that. So that's the reason for this. The way we will go about it is that whatever suggestions that come up through the school committee members or any community members who may have reached out to you, we'll put that on the docket. We'll try and figure out a way to manage that list and work with Dr. Kavanaugh, because some of the agenda items, based on the request, may take some time, and we'll have to figure out how to fit it into the year-long agenda. And that's another aspect that we're hoping to discuss with Dr. Kavanaugh. How can we look at an agenda planner that lays out the plan for the entire year? And as we have seen, some items may come to us which may not be under the purview of the school committee, in which case we can come back and say, we cannot add it to the agenda because of this reason. But any and every suggestion on what folks want to hear or talk about are welcome.
It's just that we will need probably to have a vote on some content for our website.
Okay.
And that could be like September, any time between August and October, I think is a reasonable.
For school committee website.
For the school committee. I know there's, Meg and Mina probably have some stuff that's been waiting in the wings, and then we have some actual issues with our portion of the site.
Yeah.
So at some point, I'd like to get, like, probably 15 minutes or so.
Thank you. I have one request, which is related to differentiation. I'd like us to come back with some information on the differentiation that is offered in the classrooms in our district, and any further supports that are needed, and how those methods are serving our learners.
So looking for a report? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Yes, and I think all of those things will require some time and work with Dr. Kavanaugh and whoever she recommends we work with.
Okay, and then we will also have the three that we did not get to today, which is the school committee norms, the school committee meeting calendar, and the school committee liaison roles to bring back.
Right. Sorry.
As we bring back the calendar, if there's just one, and maybe this will just be for ease next time, if there's one thing to think about, October, it looks like we have meeting dates on the 3rd and the 17th. And then there are no meetings on the 24th, 31st, 7th, and then we get to the 14th. The 28th is actually Thanksgiving, so, and I guess I would, we would probably try to avoid the 31st because it's Halloween. So I didn't know if maybe the.
Are you suggesting you don't want to meet on Thanksgiving?
So, Dr. Kavanaugh.
I'll do what everybody else wants.
Just July to September are the ones which are confirmed. I think the rest require very work.
Okay, I just wanted to be conscious about.
We do want to try to move those dates that we know we can do.
And open suggestions in that timeframe, but happy to take on other thoughts. So should we just discuss that since we're talking about it? Do we want to do that, or should we just hold off for next time?
We did catch up to some of the time we lost. We could have a start of the conversation. All right.
So to that point, we could shift the dates in October from the 3rd and the 17th to the 10th and the 24th. Just take those two Thursdays and.
Go later.
And shift them by one week, if that's agreeable.
Okay, so we're looking at the calendar now. So we're back to, is that right, Nancy?
Yes, so we're back to the calendar, and we were. Do you want to start with something particular that you want to say?
I just want to say that if we look at the calendar, we had discussed this at our last meeting. And the thought process was to have those three categories. There was feedback that was received that probably we should have more office hours. There were some discussions about, you know, going back to folks to confirm some of the dates, et cetera. So Nancy and I actually looked at this together. We added two office hours. One is coming up next month, tied with the farmers' market. And then in September, tied, we thought possibly going to the spoon as an option for office hours. So those were the two office hours that came up. We shifted the dates, as requested by Dr. Kavanaugh, to accommodate Ms. Parsons, and I think Nancy had also requested. And anyhow, that was our schedule from the beginning, so shifted those back to the appropriate Thursdays. Besides that, as I shared, you know, the information on this self-paced learning, it's more happening through some dissemination of details that I am receiving at this point in time. There isn't really any module that's readily available. If I find something, I'll be happy to share, but I encourage each one of you. I'm sure you read material. If you want to share something around any of those topics, that would be helpful. The other thing we did was the training related to visions. It doesn't look like it's going to happen in September, so it likely happened in October, so we shifted that out. So those were the major changes, really. So the first three months are confirmed. The next set of, you know, dates, as they get finalized, we will confirm that in terms of dates and timings. But I think the bigger part is attaching the agenda planner and tying that to the calendar. One thing that is coming to my mind now is that we have our next meeting scheduled for August 15th. Given the fact that we'll be going over school improvement plans, and I'm sure there's some other items that will come up, we are talking about school committee goal-setting norms and, you know, also the liaison roles. I'm wondering if we would need to look at the timing, if we had to extend that. Perhaps Nancy and I will reach out to all of you to see if we can either extend that meeting or do we go for an additional session. But besides that, the calendar of the next, you know, for this first quarter is in front of you. If there are any thoughts and suggestions that we should consider, please let us know.
Well, shouldn't we switcheroo the October dates now? Because if we wait till August, that gets a little messy, yeah?
Yeah, I thought for expediency, it would be good to just.
Go ahead and do that.
So to the 10th and 24th of October?
And then there would only be one November meeting on the 14th?
So I'll take feedback on the rest of the dates happily, but, you know, I wouldn't want you to focus too much on that portion, because that hasn't gone through the next iteration.
Except that we do want to put that up on our, the calendar for the public to know if we're going to change our meetings.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I know there are corrections to be made based on our feedback from even the last session. We talked about a bunch of options, what are the possible places where we could have the office hours? How can we ensure that all the events that we attend are, you know, going to all the schools, all student interests, that we are going to a drama event? We're possibly going to a musical event? We were thinking about the Friends of Seaback, Bingo Night. These are the bunch of things that we talked about as making sure that there is a presence, and the school committee makes an effort to show support.
So what's the, what's the goal of the calendar that we have in front of us right now, Mina? Are we looking for specific meeting dates and trainings, or is there more to it than what? You're saying there's more to it?
So to me, the first step is to be able to see what's our commitment for the year in terms of not just the meetings, but all these other events, office hours, et cetera, right? That's the first step. And kind of be thoughtful in signing up for all these programs, and that they're not necessarily happening ad hoc, but we are actually putting some thought behind, what is it that we want to make sure we're there? So that's the first step.
Which, can I just ask, sorry, which programs, Mina?
I beg your pardon?
When you say programs, what do you, what do you mean by programs?
I mean, I mean events. So we were talking about, you know, we haven't really gone to many events, for instance, in Hopkins. Should we identify a Hopkins event? Because that's a way for us to be part of the, get into the community, make sure we are around to hear, to participate, to support.
Maybe we need to.
Does that make sense, Jen?
Oh, I understand what you're saying now, yep.
You really did. Mina, have you.
And the second, sorry.
Have you, have you asked, like, the Hopkins principal, or each of the principals, what they think would be an ideal representative event for us to attend?
We haven't gone to that step yet, Amanda. Again, Nancy and I talked about this a little bit, that the, you know, September is a busy time, so there may not be too many school events necessarily that we can attend. We talked about the popsicles on the playground, but they were just those events. But in the upcoming months, we're hoping to go through Dr. Kavanaugh and figure out what those events could be.
Okay.
So I, I thought we were talking about the ice cream social, not the. So I, I thought we were talking about the ice cream social, not the popsicles on the playground.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I, that's, just want to make sure I have my dates right.
Do you have preference for ice cream?
I do, but I'm not sure, well, I'm not sure if the, because the popsicles on the playground are specific for orientation events for students, I didn't know.
Right, right.
Whereas the people coming into the district for the other events.
I think there's a sorbet event, too.
I want that one, and if there's anything that has hot fudge, I am in on that.
So what are we looking at today for the calendar, then? Like, what, it's on the agenda, but I guess I, I don't have a clear understanding of what we're doing with it.
So all we're doing is to just share that these are the things we are planning for in the, in this first quarter of this new year, the new school year, and for everyone to be aware that, you know, we may have the Y advocacy day that you may want to attend. You know, please make time to be, participate in the office hours in August and September. So it's kind of a, you know, just looking ahead, what the calendar looks like, that's all it really is. So just bringing an update back, and hopefully we'll have a home for it on the new website in the upcoming weeks, months. And once that happens, the updates will happen right on the calendar. And the second part of this, Jen, is tying the agenda planner to the meetings, the meeting dates, the school committee meeting dates, which are color-coded.
And the agenda planner is like the big higher-level stuff, like when budget meetings happen? Is that what you mean when you say agenda planner?
I think we need to discuss that a little bit with Dr. Kavanaugh. Georgette had shared something very detailed. I've seen some from other districts, how their planners are. I have some thoughts, but I would certainly want to discuss with Dr. Kavanaugh as well before we bring it back to the entire committee, because it's, you know, items that come through Dr. Kavanaugh's office, like you said, the budget items. We know that budget happens from this time to this time. We know there will be some joint board, select board meetings, right, and appropriations committee. So things of that nature, but also key decisions that we want to, that will be coming up. So being aware of it, knowing that, you know, for instance, that's probably not planned for this year, but let's say transportation, or after-school program contracts, things of that nature. If we highlight it beforehand, the community is also aware that these are things that come up at this time of the year. So that would be part two.
So quickly, is, is August 11th a date that would work for other people for office hours? I don't want to do that. Okay.
I'm away. August 11th.
I think I...
Okay.
I just have a comment on the October shift. I just, no, not that it, I mean, don't change anything, but I am personally not available to do visions training that weekend.
We don't have a date for the visions training.
Oh, it's the 23rd to 27th.
Okay, so I, it, the visions training, we're waiting on the trainer, and it's actually only a one-day event, anyway. It would like a follow-up with like a couple of hours long, and like a month afterwards.
Okay. I have a family wedding. The 24th and 25th, I'll be busy. It's a Friday wedding.
Very nice. I don't know, I...
So, yeah, I mean, if, if the meeting gets changed, it wouldn't be that big of a deal, right? Because, I mean...
I just missed one meeting, yeah.
Oh, so you're talking about, you're talking about the, not the visions training.
Just that little, that little stretch. I'm usually around, I don't have much going on in my life, but that particular weekend, I have a wedding, so.
The visions training doesn't have a date that would be, it could certainly steer away from that date as we get it nailed down, but in terms of this, so you would not be at the October 24th school committee?
Likely not, yeah.
Okay. That's okay. Are we ready to?
I guess, yeah.
The only other comment I had, Mina, going back to the self-paced training and the idea of sharing training content, I just, I'm weird about email, and I like to be able to figure out what bucket it goes in when it comes in, so I'm wondering if people could preface the subject with self-paced training, just so that when it comes out, I can connect it with these, like, peach-colored dots on the calendar. And it's kind of weird, but...
No, that's good.
At least can help me put it into its own folder or bucket or something, so I, I can think of it in that way.
Okay.
That's good for me. All right, I think we're maybe starting to, our brains are getting, at least, I'll speak for myself, my brain is starting to, to wind down here, so do we want to move into items by consensus?
Definitely.
Sure, thanks. So, Superintendent, I recommend that you approve the items by consensus as outlined in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Mina?
Yes.
Okay, so that's so moved, and that moves us down into looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Mina?
Aye.
So we are adjourned at 1:21, and our next meeting that we have scheduled is August 15th, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. here in the H-Cam studios. Thank you very much for all who tuned in, and enjoy the summer.